There we go. All right. Good evening, everyone. It is, I didn't bring my glasses. It is six eighteen. It is Monday, March sixth, two thousand and twenty-three. We are having an early start tonight for an executive session under RCW forty-two point three zero point one one zero, section one subsection I regarding litigation. Um, we will be, how much time do you think we're gonna need, Ms. Randolph?
I always guess wrong, but, um, but I would say seven o'clock if we finish earlier.
Oh, okay. We'll be okay. All right. So we, how about, how about we go to six fifty-eight? Does that work? And get, give us two minutes to get out of there and be on time. All right. We will be in executive session until six fifty-eight P M. Yeah, okay. And pause. There we go. Where's the, there's, all right, the time is six fifty-three. We are out of executive session. Pause.
And camera.
I did a recording. Where's camera? You're on camera, right?
Left.
All right. Stop video, no? I think we're good.
My number one.
I think we're recording. We're on camera, right?
Did you?
Okay.
Oh, okay. Think we're good.
Do you guys see my thing? Okay. Good evening, everybody. It is Monday, March sixth, two thousand and twenty-three, that's seven oh four P M. Please ensure your cell phones are silenced and rise to the pledge. I'm glad I'm leaving at a well time. I'm going to be nice to say seven hundred and ten. And to be very proud of it for which it stands. One nation under God, individual, liberty, and justice for all. Thank you. This will be the same.
Councilwoman Burke?
I.
Councilwoman Brown?
I.
Councilwoman Smith?
Here. Pretty sure.
Yeah.
Councilwoman Holland?
Everybody said.
Councilwoman Doughty?
I.
Councilwoman Paul.
All right, everyone that's here in account of four.
I was not.
Yes. And for your microphone are on and you're close to them when speaking, so they're important to paying. Uh, this evening, we have a couple of items to, um, we, we have some new folks to intergr- uh, address to the community this evening. We have a plan to say Princess is here, and we also have a special presentation, uh, for Ms. Mary Parsons. Um, and we're gonna start with that one first. So Travis, do you want me to start or? Okay, so I, I think we'll work this where while you talk, I will reel back up, so we can, uh, begin that. So Ms. Parsons, you can join us. All right. Are you excited?
I am.
Okay. Uh, Ms. Parsons was with the city for ten years and then came back to us um, after a very difficult time in the city's, uh, life, um, which was not an easy thing to do, uh, for me, but, um, Ms. Parsons was like, oh, with a few other folks during the COVID time, uh, but she was gracious enough to come back and join us on a contract phase of four, three years. Is that right?
On and off.
On and off for years, uh, to help us with some of the projects I needed to be done, and we were certainly grateful for that. Thank you very much for that. Um, you're finally going to retire and leave, and I'm not happy about that, uh, because I, I think about once a month, how's Mary doing? Where is she now? Is she, what project is she on? What one is she going to do next? Or so. Um, we're, we're sad to see you go, but we're very happy for you. So we do have a, a few tokens here in Travis, maybe if you're in, um, hear some things as I, as I go around, um, so we have a beautiful certificate, three of them, and certificate of appreciation is given our words to Mary Parsons, the recognition of her thirteen years of dedicated and faithful to, to say within the sixth day of March, twenty twenty-three. Very bad, and something very special was found, um, and you don't go out very often. Um, but this is a very special one because it's one of our older ones, um, but the city indicates that the person that is that holds this item, uh, is a friend of the city and a friend of the city forever. So with that, I have a certificate, which is, um,
I don't.
Yeah.
What do you do on?
But that's a good round there. We appreciate it. Don't get tired. Yeah. All right, and with that, I'm gonna turn this over, um, to Travis and we'll back up there because we're gonna turn, we're gonna bring you over up here and show them, kind of, all right?
Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. So, they might, like, we tell you, they're, they're, they're.
So I, I wanted to, I wanted to say how much I appreciate the fact that you know, that really, you think it's lengthy to us for as long as, as they did. Mary was one of the first people that I met when I came into the city, and she helped orient me to how things were going. And, um, it's funny that when she arrived, she said it was one of the second city council meeting that she attended in all of that time, so I don't know how she got so much. But, uh, that's kind of surprised me. Um, I want to say that Mary was absolutely a gem to work there. She worked incredibly hard, I think, for her day. She worked day after day. She, um, there was some of the most difficult people in the city, who handled so many, like, greats and professionalism that was amazing. And, um, I appreciated the fact that she consistently did that without giving rundown or without it's worrying on her, and she was doing it. It was in a great way, and, uh, the term that, um, I thought applied best for her is that she dedicated her service in the city after all those years, and so it just really impressed me and what stuff was made about her, and so I can't say enough, I'm thanking for, for doing that. For being such a faithful employee for all these years, no matter what happened, especially these last few years, when we kind of struggled along, and it was literally two months for this and two months for that, and you're not coming back, and I think in the end, she gets one, two weeks off, and then we can call her back for one more. We might not quite sure what the purpose of that last week, the last part, it's nice to have a one month period. So Tracy also had something to say, so I also think it was funny that in our conversation, everybody at this meeting, I think, except for maybe Carol? And maybe Diana? No, I think just Carol. She's out laughing everybody in the city there. But by the way, it's like a little more light to God and Gina. So yeah, so, like, you do people here that she did it all last, so. You know, there are a lot of good training and orienting.
There's at least one we needed or two.
Thank you very much.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Well, I don't want to say except that we love you, and you come back anytime you want. I'm gonna be hugging everybody over here. So Mary is a gem, and, um, I can razz Mary and tell her anything. I'd kind of rather, as how she comes in the office anyway, and I say, what are you doing here? Are you still working here? Or like that? She's like, yeah, I'm like, okay, can you stay late, please? To cover the office because people want to take time off. She's like, okay. So anyway, Mary does everything for us. We really love you. We really love you and, and wish that you're still working here, but at the same time, he's retired, so I'm glad that you're retired, and, uh, this is a little token of our appreciation from the city, and you can open it up in the private, give your own phone, because I have a risque, you don't worry about that. So this, I think it'll get a laugh out of, and I appreciate, and so we just want to say thank you very much.
Mary, do you have anything you'd like to say to the group?
Well, you know, I just wanted to say thank you, um, when I was hired initially in two thousand and ten, um, it was on a hard time, uh, position, for a hard time position, and, uh, it, I didn't have a clue that I would be around as long as I was, but, um, I, I enjoyed it. I enjoyed working with all the, the people from the different departments um, that I was able to work with, uh, buyer employees and help with work, and, um, got so many even outside agencies, and got to know people from, um, other jurisdictions, other cities, and I appreciate everybody's help during that timeframe, and I will miss the people that I worked with and a lot of the people, uh, who came and went throughout that timeframe. I will miss them. I don't hope I'm gonna miss dog working, but I mean, I will definitely miss the people. So thank you to the city. Thank you very much.
You're welcome. Congratulations.
It's been the opportunity to even come here and work.
Thank you. We couldn't have done it without you. Mr. Boileau?
Now, I have another item for.
For later, yes.
So I can do that later?
Yeah, you'll do that later, yes.
Okay, uh, Saturday. Something important. They're like, they're welcoming them, and helping them welcome them up here. They're going to their. They're pleased to welcome their two thousand and twenty-three living Saturday.
Hi, my name is Bertha Donald, and I'm Miss Woodland, two thousand and twenty-two. Um, my parents are Matt and Ken Donald, and at school I do NHS, track and field, cross-country, um, knowledgeable robotics, W club, and then I'm also involved with the school board, because I'm the school board representative for the school. When I'm older, I want to be a male leader nurse.
Hi, I'm Princess Brooke, daughter of all in care. In school, I'm involved in volleyball and NHS and W club, and after school, I like to go to school and study to be a teacher.
Hi, I'm Miss Woodland, fourth, I'm starting off my year.
Okay. Oh, but.
School, I am in Jaka, and I'm also a part of the junior and senior team. Um, after graduating, I would like to go to the state, and we've seen my career for almost a decade.
I'm, I'm Princess Taylor, daughter of Miami, born in South Summer. And school, I'm involved in volleyball, softball. They go to a trade school up in Vancouver for criminal justice. And after high school, I'm enjoying law enforcement and eventually go up to the sports camp.
Okay. Well. Thank you. Thank you for being here this evening. Normally, I would be down there, uh, but Mayor Potem, Councilmember Smith has a, a small token of our appreciation for you stepping up. I know it's not easy to put your name into the hat, and it's so nice to see Miss Woodland here this evening. Uh, it's been a year, obviously, since the last time you stood here, and I can see, uh, how much you've flourished and how much you've grown, so well done, and thank you for, for representing the city, and as we come into our next planter stage, we look forward to seeing the three of you out there about at our businesses and taking all of our money. So with that, we really appreciate you being here this evening, and, and thank you for stepping up to represent Woodland and, and our community. So we look forward to seeing you. Thank you so much. And with that, um, we're gonna, we're gonna take about a seven-minute break, so, because you haven't hit that table yet. So we'll go ahead and take a seven-minute break, and then, uh, we'll sell some more tickets. So with that, it's seven sixteen. Um, actually, we'll, we'll take a nine-minute break. We'll return at seven twenty-five. And. There we go. All right, we, it is seven twenty-five, right on the dot. We are back in session, and at this time, we are gonna move on to citizen communications for items not on the agenda. And first up, we have, uh, John Kenwisher. We'll provide you five minutes. Uh, let us know why you're here, and if you live inside the city limits or outside would be great.
I live inside the city limits. Good evening, everybody.
Good evening, sir.
Good to see everybody. Uh, I attended the last planning commission meeting, which was a few weeks ago, in which they introduced two consulting firms to look at into Woodland's plans for a lot of different things. Uh, air and water quality, disaster response, new housing, transportation, and some other areas. I don't know if you all listened to that. I know one member of you was here for that meeting, but I didn't see anybody else.
It will, it will actually come to council as a presentation at a later date.
Well, this is part of what that's about. Uh, as far as the planning commission goes, I have some questions about that. Maybe you can answer, maybe you can't, maybe you don't want to. Um, how were the members picked for that planning party?
I'm sorry?
How are the members picked for the?
There is an application process, and they serve out a, a term, um, and it's similar to a city council, so their advisor board to the council.
Okay, just wanted to know. At that meeting, they said they hadn't met pretty much. What's that all about?
Uh, we've, uh, Mr. Goddard, could you answer that? I'm sure we've had some, Mr. Goddard runs that, that board.
Do you work with related with staff, and you didn't have any issues to take to the planning commission, or rather than have them meet and not use their time productive, cancel um, through the planning committee?
Thank you.
The only problem I have with all the things that the planning commission and these two, uh, consulting firms brought up is that all of them concern transportation. Never one of them. If you can't get people out of this town for disaster relief, you got a problem. Air quality, if you gotta sit at that light down there for five minutes to get through the signal, you got air quality problems. Everything relates to the I five interchange there, and the other one too. And so it's all for naught. If you don't fix the problem with the road system, we're going nowhere. And it's only gonna get worse. The more houses they build up Lewis River Road, I sat there at ten forty-five this morning, clinging back to Ace Hardware. I mean, that's ridiculous. Okay. Or I should say the lack of movement for vehicles, but it's not moving. You gotta wait there for three lights sometime to get through this. Okay. Um. And since Woodland has been selected for one of three pilot projects?
Yes.
Okay? So if Woodland is really a pilot project, why can't we get together with the state and the federal agencies, all the legislators, and see if they put their money where their mouth is?
Well, that, that's a, that's a bigger conversation, and I'm assuming you're talking transportation.
Yes, I am.
All right, and I encourage you to stick around for the rest of the meeting when Public Works gives their report this evening.
Okay. And this is, here's something that probably doesn't, it doesn't relate to this, but they're talking about putting a cap on I five in Seattle to build housing on top of. They're spending money up there like crazy. If they got that kind of money in the feds and the state, why can't they give Woodland some of that money to get this problem straightened out?
I would agree with you, the great state of Seattle.
Okay. Okay, I said for that much. For the city of Woodland is concerned, um, this road back here, I was thinking about that.
Which one are you referring to?
The main road, I don't know what it's called.
The in front of.
Out to the freeway.
Uh, the one that comes through past the Ace Hardware there?
No.
Oh, the other one, Atlantic.
I did.
Okay.
Okay.
Atlantic.
So you got to do RV park build down there. Yeah, okay. And then what's gonna go across the street, all that leveled out there? Is there a plan for?
Leveled off, leveled off area.
Across the street from the RV park. That, where Green Mountain Road is.
Oh, 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 gotcha. You're on Olpak Highway. I, I've got you over here. Sorry, I've, I've got you over at the, over in town. Uh, that, that is commercial business space. And then up behind there, there's plans for, um, an apartment complex that has yet to be determined, but they haven't started clearing that property yet.
Okay. And then there's another problem. If the Scottsdale Park gets finally going, if it gets going, when it gets going? When you have tournaments up there for four or five ball fields, you don't have two hundred cars up there going up and down that road.
I think there's actually spots up there for almost five hundred.
Okay. I'm not talking about that. I'm talking about the traffic.
I know.
Because you'll have to hire another policeman just to direct traffic. It's gonna be that bad.
And.
My word for it. I've seen this before, and, and the urban areas in Portland, and that is a huge problem. Okay.
And I'm gonna, I'm gonna give you a thirty-second warning here, because you're, you're running over your five.
Okay. Just another note, I don't know if you've seen Fifth Avenue and Peaking Road down there?
Yes.
This spot whole city. That's because of all the truck traffic that can't go on like short drive now. That thing is dissolved.
Understand. Thank you, sir. Mr. Boileau?
Good evening, and thanks, everybody. I mean, I'm glad to see people here. It's like, it's, uh, always good, uh, good to see what's going on. Um, the first thing that I wanted to talk about, my, my first days coming up, we own fifteen, during eighteen. Uh, the fork has tickets for sale, and we're also still seeking sponsorships, prizes, and partnerships, um, for, uh, Raffle. Of course, that's with the ticket for, for the Raffle. Grand prize is five thousand dollars. Our next meeting is Tuesday, the twenty-first. And, uh, that will be at the VFW Hall at six P M. The other thing I wanted to talk about is I am working on putting together another neighborhood association here on the east side.
Okay.
So if people are interested in getting involved with that, so we can take on any neighborhood problems, kind of like the uh, neighborhood association that's formed on the other side of the river, the North Port Neighborhood Association, to deal with the, uh, mining issue. Uh, come and see me, uh, so we can have the neighborhood organized, and they, hopefully, get some other neighborhoods organized and, uh, be able to be better at dealing with some of the issues here.
You're not talking neighborhood watch, you're talking just an association too. Okay, just making sure. Okay. Perfect. All right. Thank you, Mr. Boileau, and thank you for bringing the ladies in this evening, and thank you to the lovely ladies behind you who I didn't ask to get up and speak, but this close, this close, because I know you like it. Um, thank you. Thank you for all you do. Thank you for all you do for, for our community, Mr. Boileau. It's not a job that goes unnoticed, so, um, it, it's it, it's a big lift, so we appreciate it. Um, Mr. Shaw? Good evening.
Evening. Yeah, I didn't know here until the night. That's what my concern is, just driving around it with, with all the new construction that's going on. What aren't we planning on doing? We planning on doing with the roads that we have now? The only thing I've been able to find out so far is, no, that belongs to the state. So who's gonna talk to the state about this now? And then what's the city gonna do?
Again, it's a bigger conversation, but, uh, it will be addressed after citizen comments this evening during my report and during public works. And there's, we, we do have some things in the, in the works. At least trying. Anyway, no, thank you, sir.
What was his first name?
Uh, Cliff. Uh. Mr. Jackson, if you don't mind going in the last, I'm gonna pull up one more here, Ms. Rab. And then we'll, we'll go to online, and then we'll bring you up at the end.
So, uh, I would like to request that the council stop blaming everyone else for the inspection of the city water and sewer system, or negligence, and take responsibility to let us, the customers, know where all of our money has gone so far. Again, it is not normal for utilities to even need a seven percent increase per year. There's at least four people up here who are, have been business owners, who know that a seven percent increase is not normal. That happened for over a decade before we did this new rate increase where, I know what tier you are, you're up to a hundred and forty percent increase. That's why people don't understand why their water bills are so high. Um. I, after the December meeting, had talked to Mr. Voice, um, Administrator Voice, and had a bunch of questions, and they were supposed to be looking into doing a meeting for the three, so we can actually pass questions to the city council that could be answered. Um, that has never been done, as far as I know. Um, I never got a reply back. It's been almost three months. I have them, and I'll give them all to you. Uh, after a conversion project is completed, the project manager who oversaw the project should do a post-conversion review on how well it went and go over all the open issues. To my knowledge, this hasn't been addressed yet, with Minol. Then the project manager asks for when these open issues will get resolved, and by when? The post-conversion review keeps going until all issues are resolved. That's usually how it works in a normal project, in the businesses. So number one, who has the list of ongoing issues? How does the city follow up on them to see if they ever result? After all, the city pays for the service, or lack of service in this case, and should be given an update on how it is going. Number two, the city council has been aware of these issues now, since the conversion, but we're looking at six months. And would be asking the vendor that they hired to provide an update on the issues with solutions. Number three, this information should be transparent to the utility customer, which is what we've been asking the whole time. Concerns regarding, and then this is a totally different, different issue. I'm not sure how many of you know what was going on up in Tenino with the state and that agency wanting to open a L R A, which is less restrictive accommodations into their community for S V Ps, which are sexually violent predators that they're trying to move off McNeil Island. McNeil Island is for people who have gone through the judicial system, and even though they do their sentence, they were, are required to be housed on McNeil Island until they can prove that they are no longer a threat to the community for their sexually violent crimes. That's why they're called predators. However, in the wisdom of our leaders, um, they've gone through a loophole, and with their buddies have set up the system of, of doing these L R As in communities. There's one in Enamphal already in there. There's, I think, if I remember right, there's eighteen in communities already. Um. I want to know if our city and our council knows about this program, if you've responded. Um, because I don't want our community to get taken advantage of the way that Enamphal, that Tenino, Tenino actually got their stocks. Um, it's an issue with collusion between governor, the A G, the D O C, and D S H S, being both tied to the psychiatrist and the polygraph examiners, who are all in collusion, who are allowing these people off of McNeil Island at a cost of thirty-five thousand per person a month. Um, they have not followed any of the laws regarding notifications about sex offenders being housed in communities, even though these are level three sex offenders that weren't supposed to leave McNeil Island, and have been illegally placed by elementary and middle schools, and bus stops, and law enforcement has not been notified at any point in time by any of the facilities that have been opened that.
I'm gonna give you a thirty-second warning.
That there were sex offenders being moved into the communities. These, there's, these are just normal-looking houses that aren't going by any of the rules that have been set up, and I would like to know what we can do as a community to zone this out of, so we don't have to have this going on, and be proactive and not reactive. And these are my questions that I have had.
Okay.
I'm not sure if there's a best for everybody.
Uh, thank you, Ms. Rab. I'm not aware of the L R A program, and we have not been contacted, um, but thank you for bringing that to our attention, and we'll definitely. Okay, we'll, we'll look into that and see, um, what that's all about. Um, as far as the Minol issues, we have a weekly meeting, as discussed during this meeting, every Wednesday. We have a, I would call it a clearinghouse for complaints and issues that we are tracking internally. We've now taken that to one person, our public works department, um, which is addressed with Minol, uh, weekly, and clearing those out with timelines that will, that's, actually, I need to keep one though. Okay. Um, so that is something that is happening. Uh, council has been updated. Uh. I'm trying to remember the other questions that you had that were in there. Um. We are being proactive with our discussions with them and administering the contract. In fact, we had a, a meeting with our attorney this evening where we went through the contract to, uh, I don't want to say too much, so, uh, to ensure that the contract is being fulfilled, uh, to the spirit. So, um, that is an ongoing process weekly. Uh, that's not, it, it's not lost on us, but we are keeping track of those. We have spreadsheets, and we are making sure that all community member complaints, uh, with utilities are being followed up on. Anyone else in the gallery? Anyone else in the gallery that failed to sign up at the beginning of the meeting? Anyone online? If you want mine this evening. Seeing none, Mister Jackson, chief, welcome.
Thank you, uh Mister Mayor, Reverend Council, Mike Jackson, on behalf of Clotella's congregation. First of all, uh please accept our apologies on behalf of the district for being a little disconnected from my company of like. We've had a few scheduling things and a lot of uh activities at work with uh bringing on new hires and those sorts of things. Uh moving forward, you'll see uh for myself or division chief healer at at least every other council meeting. And certainly as requested, if needed, Chief Nora is always still available. Uh unfortunately, he has a reoccurring conflict on Monday evenings, so that will precipitate him from being. But uh short of that, just a couple of quick updates. We do have a lot of exciting things going on. So uh as you recall, uh we have our EMS W pass. We are moving forward with the staff improvements with that. Uh we are more routinely at a minimum of three people here on staff. Uh we currently have seven lateral new hires that we're bringing on board and we'll have fourteen entry level new hires. That will be bringing on in a couple of months. So within a few months, we'll have uh twenty four hours, seven days a week. Minimum of three people with a paramedic around the clock. And we'll be positioned to augment EMS transport uh by the end of the year to help bridge the gap where A M R is falling a little bit short response time. So we're excited about those improvements. Um other partnerships, uh we've had uh what we our fleet. As many of you know, a large portion of our fleet was actually twenty two, twenty three years old. And it was kind of a conglomeration of all of the pieces of Woodland. So we have uh without doing a bond or any other issues, we've been able to budget. And as of the middle of this week, all of our frontline equipment will be within two years of age. So and that puts our backup fleet in decent shape and our frontline fleet in the in excellent shape. So that's exciting. We'll carry it into the future. And other things uh in my part of the organization, we have community risk reduction. And we've had a lot of partnerships. We have contracts with both uh peace health and legacy hospitals. Um as well as with the area agency on aging and disabilities for Southwest Washington. The A C H, the folks that are doing Medicare and Medicaid transformation, we have a number of programs they're funding along with uh B T A Health. So by the end of the month, we're setting up a co responder unit, at least uh forty hours a week. They'll respond to the mental health crisis calls and some of our low activity calls, direct folks to veteran different resources other than emergency departments.
Nice.
And we're working on follow up with patients from the hospitals, to the bulk of our high system utilizers and that. Help get those folks uh better and more appropriate resources. So and most of that, well, that has all been with the outside funding. Just want to give you a quick update and uh we'll look forward to uh seeing you a little more frequently and be open if any questions ready to go.
How about we have some questions now, Mister Jackson? Mister Smith, because I know I have one. I know you're in trouble.
I am now on the uh public safety committee and I see your name on our list of people who are gonna be there. Does you coming bi monthly? Include going to the public safety meetings also?
I have myself or Chief Peeler, the organization of the chief department, I have two division chiefs, myself and Chief Peeler.
You're trying to, I'm sorry, you're trying to answer that. You're worried about what I'm gonna say. I can tell you're eyeballing me.
And they'll start at six P M now.
Perfect. Thank you. Any other questions from from the board before I? First of all, thank you for coming this evening and and giving us a a quick update. Um I do have a few questions. Is Woodland still um? The one of the busiest stations in in your in your guys' responsible area?
Is our second busiest station uh in the district. And uh some of that is with the growth in Ridgefield and then the station in Ridgefield is surrounded by our district. So it serves as second calls for a lot of areas, whereas Woodland doesn't do as many second call, not because it's at the edge of the district. But uh and I I don't have response numbers with me, but last year, I think we were sixteen, seventeen hundred. Unit responsive out of Woodland. Woodland is one of our areas that uh more frequently see back to back calls. Don't really know why that anomaly is, but um.
Good. Mister Taylor is doing great. Now, what is is he? What is his title?
So he uh works on my team, he's the deputy fire marshal.
Oh, deputy fire marshal.
And he's mostly with all of our new construction projects across for fire marshal services, we provide those all three cities. Um and he deals with the new construction projects across those three cities.
We we appreciate him and I've sat in on a meeting or two with him and with with Tracy and Travis and he does a wonderful job. So pass along our thanks to that. You ready for the question?
Absolutely.
What's the capital facility improvement plan for Woodland? Considering we're one of the busiest ones over here. And I know we're still working through some items in the transfer of the district and where are we on that?
So we are updating our full capital capital facility plan, looking at all of our facilities. Um we, there are two priority projects, one being completion of the Woodland facility.
That's all I needed to hear. You can stop. No, please continue.
A another facility south of Ridgefield, which and I think one of the things that I started realizing is it's a system, all these pieces. So you get multiple responses or in requires multiple units and all of both of all the visits. So anytime we add a unit to the system, it it benefits everyone. Uh this year and with that EMS loving, we have been able to, at the moment, it's a third of the time. But we have staffed an additional unit at the south end of the district, which has helped keep units in service up towards the northern of the district. And we're working with our partners at Fire District Six, so that by the end of the year, that unit will also be in service twenty four seven. And those especially when we have a structure fire or another significant incident that puts another unit that much closer. And helps us to redistribute when units are tied up to mention we provide that coverage.
Nice.
That's been one of the delays getting that unit in service, but yes, Woodland. The question here, as well as one additional facility, are top on that.
You you realize this is an open public meeting?
I do.
Okay, alright. I'm just make sure. Yeah, you said that out loud. Okay, perfect. Awesome. Um and with that, that's all that I have for you this evening. Thank you for coming out this evening. That wasn't too hard. Chief Jackson?
You weren't here at the end of the year for us to say we need to go.
Well, congratulations.
Thank you very much. I I am blessed with a remarkable team that does a lot of great work and exciting things and does. Much more engaged in the community. I think that's one of the benefits of our uh combined different things like that community paramedics. And those things that are on our chain wouldn't be possible with individual pieces, but since we cover a bigger area. And the one thing that she's willing to step up and provide that service, she thought that would. Those folks did a remarkable job, made me shine and they did the hard work and then nominated me and made me one of the greatest.
He came right up and just like grabbed that trophy and said, look what I did. No, you you deserve it. You do a wonderful job. Congratulations.
Thank you.
Any any other questions? We we'd invite you, any of you ever wanted to tour the guest facilities, look at equipment, hot cup of coffee, whatever it be. By all means, reach out and we'd be happy to uh meet you here down at our headquarters, wherever you'd like to be and uh.
Riding a fire truck an option?
It is an option.
You don't you don't want to ride the fire truck. You want to go in a police car. You don't want to have this debate right here? Let let me get, let me get my cuff out real quick.
I think we all know who the hero is.
Yeah. The ones that come in and clean up the mess. It's a good time. Alright, thank you, chief. Thank thank for allowing us to give you a hard time today. And moving on for items on the agenda, Mister Lynette. Did I say that right? Okay. Welcome.
It's a timer, not a quarter.
Oh, okay, okay.
Mister Mayor, Council, thank you for allowing me to uh do your presentation. I have a question. On that concern, I don't know what the right topic is about the eighty years. I read through the proposal, I read through your new contract that is very, very rigid. I mean, it seems to put some pretty, a pretty good spin on what people are going to be required to do. Um what I don't quite understand is, I understand that from what it says, that only. Five people can be total occupancy of the project that mean the between the two dwellings, only five people can live on that property.
Okay. Um I'm gonna defer to my my team over here. It's gonna be Mister Goddard. Okay.
Earlier before the meeting, because there's a a maximum of five individual.
Okay.
And a six month, the owner has to live on site and there's some very strict requirements in going into that. And uh Travis explained that to me quite well.
Okay.
My question is, is that in my concern, whatever the right way to say this is, on the coast. They end up with a lot of these types of units that end up being Airbnbs, Acasa, all these kinds of things. That are income generators for the people who own the property, but they don't do a darn thing to benefit the housing situation. They are um they're very beneficial for the people who own the properties and in fact. I I did quite a bit of reading of research and it doesn't matter, California, Oklahoma, Oregon, wherever it may be. East Coast Florida is a prime example of it. These units being a maximum usually of about eight hundred square feet. That's the size of a one bedroom apartment. And so the limitations of who can live in those is pretty strict. So my question is this. Are these going to be looked at in the city of Woodland as a possibility for an extended family unit area like a mother in law house? Or a a you know, a parents who are doing poorly? What 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 is the plan for this? And I'm not expecting an answer.
And I don't know that I can give you one. I the the spirit of that is exactly what you said. That is that is the spirit of that. However, we do have individuals and property owners that will attempt to take advantage of the situation. With the other statements that you made of income generators. Um our intent, and Mister Goddard, you can correct me. Our intent is to create more housing options uh for our community. Uh we we currently don't have a lot of places for our children after we send them off to college to come home to. Um this is potentially an option to to bring our our children home, uh considering we don't have a lot of housing around here for them. And and by housing, I mean apartments, uh things that they can afford. Um a a new teacher here in Woodland, I believe, uh at the middle school starts out at forty five thousand dollars a year. Um most of those individuals are single uh and don't have a a dual income. I think we call them um. Oh, what do we call them? We call them dinks, I think. Yes, dual income, no children. Yeah, no kids, yes. Um so. I think the spirit of the code, I don't know, I just did. So I I think Mister Goddard, maybe you can jump in and and provide a statement on that as well.
So the other question I want to ask you, you brought it up actually, is how are you going to be able to control this? What that is and that there, I mean, you can tell people all day long, they have to be honest. We know a lot, you know, that was your long question. Yeah, I didn't do it.
People don't lie? No, they didn't.
And so I'm never wrong either. But the question is, how's the city going to be able to get a handle on that? I mean, is Mister Goddard gonna go out personally and have to go every house and make sure that?
We we have code enforcement. We rely on on the folks that actually live in the communities um that. And I hate to say it, neighbor on neighbor crime, but basically, you know, you're not following the rules and they call the office and code enforcement goes out. Because we're not aware that the situation's going on, uh similar to someone doing a lot of construction at their home that we're not aware of. And we just happen to get a phone call saying, hey, I I want to make sure they're doing this septic code. And we go and confirm or deny whether or not that that's occurring. Um Mister Goddard.
My time is actually up.
Okay, well, we'll answer some questions then. We'll we'll try our best here, Brady. Alright, thank you, sir.
Well, the end of my agenda today, um part of what he's talking about. The existing code section that we have in city code allows for accessory dwelling units to be in residential zones. And one of the stands or some of the standards that are in our existing code are limitations on. How accessory dwelling units can be used. And the document in your agenda today um reflects. A developer's agreement that they would enter into the city so that they can guarantee this or they can. They're committing to the city that they're going to operate that accessory dwelling unit in accordance with city regulation. Um attorney, when we get to that, I may have some comment for you. Um and one of the items that is problematic is our code does say that there's a limit on having people. And be on a property. That is not actually forcible, but it is in our code because it did prior to um Supreme Court ruling. And changes in the law, uh like the Fair Housing Act. So there are certain things we cannot require people to do. That we need to have by the property rights. And we also own um definitions for families, defining the and when on the property. So it is problematic for us to enforce. But theoretically, the idea is that this document connects accessory dwelling net owners that operate within the city limits. And they're making mention on how that accessory dwelling unit can be used.
Okay, thank you, Mister Goddard. Um and what about Airbnb? So that that came up in conversation as well.
So one of the ideas I think that we will be talking about with the comprehensive plan updated is uh and you've mentioned this. Uh at our manager meetings is um whether or not the council would like me to prepare a white paper. Doing an analysis on how our code treats Airbnb and whether or not that's a policy issue that the council would like me to tackle. If our code is unclear, because our code is written before any system. So we have bed and breakfast and depending on how somebody calls us and say, I wanna do a bed and breakfast. You can give them one answer, but if they call and say, well, I wanna do an Airbnb. They might get a different answer, but when they get an answer, well, what if I do this? What if I only do this? What if I do that? And that the answer keeps wandering around. But it's not a clear answer that they want. And they'll pick 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 folks there who have the answer that they want. So I think it's a policy issue that is not addressed by our.
I I just want to make it clear. I think it's been asserted in this in these meetings that I own an Airbnb and I do not. Um if I did, um I would I would love to have it, but I don't. Um so that this was a conversation that was not brought up by me. Um so to make it clear that this is not me trying to make special rules for something that I don't own. So just want to make that clear.
I thought you lived in Ridgefield.
Well, and I've I've been accused of living in Texas as well. Alright, uh Mrs. Ray King, you're up.
Good evening. Evening. Uh wanted to talk about the public participation plan, so more towards Travis, but.
Are you here for, I'm sorry, are you here for the port?
Uh.
Or are you just here for you? Okay, gotcha. Okay. I just want to make sure we we know what hat we're wearing. Alright, alright.
Uh so uh we reviewed the uh the public participation plan. And uh one of the things that uh wanted to make sure that you do include. And you talk about in in putting in this plan is the need for equity piece. Um if you're going and and the reason is more more selfish, because I would like you guys to address the transportation plan. Like everybody else here is here well as yourself. Um but uh regarding federal funding. Under Justice Forty, you have to have an equity element within your public participation plan. You cannot use traditional public participation elements for that. And so I've done a lot of reading on this. I've been really interested on how that works in our community. You actually have to take your statistics of your community and look at who is the marginalized population within your community. And develop a very specific plan of how you're going to do the outreach to those uh marginalized populations. Do, and you have to put that in your plan and then put it into your your public participation plan, then put it into your report. Then when you apply for federal funding, you have to show how you met that and how you outreach to these people. So um if you don't do it under this comp plan, there is the likelihood that you will not get any money for exit twenty one. Or twenty two or any other federal funding. Um as well as with the state of Washington in copying the the Justice Forty, they have inclusion uh requirements as well. And so they are actually more stringent than the federal requirements, uh but nobody knows. And so they are actually more stringent than the federal requirements, uh, but nobody knows how to read that.
Of course not.
No, yeah. Um, and it's based off of projects. And so if you identify a project and I, I'm pretty sure your attorney will identify if, uh, your complaint is identified as, um, as a project. But each project has to identify how you're going to reach those marginalized populations per project rather than for the community. So you have to identify the actual area within that project. And you have to put that in your plan. And then you have to say, okay, this is how we've done our outreach to these people in this area.
Okay, good to know.
I just wanna make sure, um, we're all learning from this and my day job, but it, it's actually fascinating because they're making, they're literally building the car as it's moving. But, um, if you don't do this, you're not gonna get the funding and I really like you guys use federal and state money rather than my, uh, tax dollars.
Gotcha. Thank you very much for that. And I saw Mr. Goddard taking some notes over there, so we appreciate that. Thank you. Mrs. Butler? You're up. Thanks for coming out tonight.
So really, my, um, concern has already been addressed and I've heard an answer, but it's, it's about the occupancy. Really, that can't be changed. There could not be an amendment or anything to this because if this is kind of be a design for like parent, grandparents, a family of four, wouldn't even be able to have grand and grandpa live on their place.
Right.
So that just seems like, yeah, I did, that was something I thought. But then he said they wouldn't be enforcing it. So there you go. Which brings up a question, but it's not.
But I guess that, that does bring up the question, does it need to be in there? I mean, that's, is that something that we can amend as we go through the process? Right, right, okay. Okay, thank you, Mrs. Butler. Appreciate you. Uh, anyone else for items on the agenda in the gallery this evening? Seeing none, anyone online for items on the agenda? Sure, there's nobody in there. Not seeing anyone. We'll be closing off the public comments now. Uh, moving on to the agenda itself this evening. Whoa. Moved by Councilmember Smith, seconded by Councilmember Dowey and Mrs. Hogan. They take the role.
I, Councilmember Hall?
I.
Councilmember Holland?
I.
Councilwoman Lynn?
I.
And the I's have an agenda has been approved. Moving on to reports of city council. Mrs. Dowey?
I went to the middle school play, um, and it was fantastic. So, um,
I heard there was about two hundred people there the first night.
Yeah, Friday night was packed. Um, I know that online they had hundred and fifty-eight or something like that online sales. And this was the first year that they did online ticket sales and that surpassed any sales that they had done per show, um, just to that. So it was a huge success. I'd helped out. Um, in the years past, my kids have been part of the place. This is the first year that our kids had stepped away from it. Um, and so it was kind of bittersweet, but they did a fantastic job.
That's why here.
Um, and so, yeah, uh, yeah, it was really great, so.
Awesome. Mr. Smith?
I as well attended the, uh, play. I think it was, uh, Danks in the Sky, what the name of it was. And I would encourage anybody to go and, uh, support the kids that are putting this play on. They did an amazing job. And, uh, I took my kids and my wife and, uh, my kids really enjoyed it as well. I think it's a great opportunity for people to support children in our community.
Awesome, thank you. Oh, Mr. Hall?
Um, I, um, was at the chamber meeting last week and our chief made a presentation there, uh, Chief Kelly and did a great job. I just think that, um, we have a lot to be proud of in the direction our fleet thing is moving and I think people, anybody that heard that presentation, I think would agree that we're doing a lot of things that are, uh, going to help the community. The, the drone piece is amazing, so, um, lots of good things coming in. I, I was impressed with that. Um, also, I wanted to say that, uh, thanks to some help at City Hall, uh, Mr. Boyce and the staff, I was able to, uh, resolve some issues that I'd had with Minol. And I think citizens should know that, um, that process is available. Uh, we don't, we don't have all the bugs worked out, but we're working on that. But we do, um, we do have some names of contact people, uh, now in Texas that we can talk to, a, a team lead and a, and a director, so. Um, there's, there's hope and that, that problem is diminishing, so, uh, I think people should know that.
Thank you, Mr. Hall. Appreciate that. And I didn't realize you gave a presentation last week.
Well, we didn't have a speaker, so I would throw it out.
Gotcha. You were the backup to the backup. Hey, get in here. Nice, good job. Anyone else for reports of city council? Perfect. Alright, seeing no one else. Moving on to reports of standing committees, uh, public safety.
We, we met today, uh, although it was cut short because of the injector section. But we talked about the, uh, Chief Kelly informed the, us that he saved one thousand two hundred and thirty dollars and twenty-three cents from the original authorized purchase for the new rifles. The final cost will be, uh, reported at, at once it's completed.
I reported to us that the Department UAV, which is the drone program is in, department, uh, department has two identified options to begin their training as UAV pilots. Once the training is complete, the officer will be required to demonstrate, um, to, uh, yeah, their, their proficiency before they be able to pilot the, uh, aircraft. Uh, Lieutenant Ortiz, Ortiz?
Ortiz.
Ortiz will oversee the training and the overall UAV program. Uh, the department has, still has two openings for officers. Anybody want to be? Uh, his transfer job and has nearly completed the department and one has nearly completed department field training, um, program. Officer Nelson will be graduating from the Criminal Justice Basic Training Academy at the end of the month.
Nice. And he'll be on his coaching trip at that point, correct? Yes, nice.
Did that all fifteen minutes.
Wow. Well done. Any questions for Mr. Burke?
Yes, they did.
Yeah, we, we, uh, we did on Thursday. There was four officers went there and, uh, of course, the most popular officer in our department was there. Uh, and, uh, they, we got great feedback. Unfortunately, I was unable to do it, but, uh, we had a sergeant, lieutenant, and two officers.
Dr. Sustain?
Yes.
Alright. Mr. Smith?
I don't know if you said this or not, but, uh, we did elect a chair first part of our meeting. Uh, Councilmember Burke is the chair and, uh, myself and Councilmember Hall are on the, uh, Public Safety Committee.
Thank you. Alright, uh, Public Works.
So that's me.
Mrs. Holland.
So, uh, Councilmember Dowey and myself met. We are still absent a seat until we go through the process to get another council member, so we don't have a chair yet. Um, we met at, uh, five thirty today and this is, I'm slower than Ms. Coleman, so I'm gonna, you can speed read through all of this. Um, some of the things that, uh, that are going on around the city in the Public Works Department. Um, let's see, there is a, uh, pump that has been on order, back order. It's finally gonna ship this month so that they can, um, write it. The transfer pump, so they're excited about that, um. Let's see, there were no bids for the Ranny Well Cleaning Out project from last year, so they have revised those big details to go out again this winter. Uh, Ranny Well Pump One will be reinstalled this month. Um, Cross Connection Program, uh, they are, that's our annual backflow summary. And they're still searching for a feasible option for that. Let's see. Ooh, water. So, um, interestingly enough, there were, um, two water, oh, two pipe failures and one bad resetter that they dealt with. They replaced nine bad water meters since last month. Um, over the last two meter reads that they have, uh, Public Works has worked with Menol to obtain abnormally high readings and reach out to residents before sending out their bills. So they were able to contact ten to fifteen customers and found most of the high reads were due to leaks on the customer side that they subsequently repaired. Um, majority of the customers were unaware of the leak and provided positive responses for the notification. Overall positive responses and, um, they will continue to do that service when high reads come in. So that's a little preemptive strike on that. So people don't have shock when they get their bill. Um, uh, hydrant testing, they are phase three will be completed and then they will move back around to phase one because it goes in a cycle. So that'll start in April. Uh, they have a new water treatment plant superintendent and he and, um, Tim are partnering up on a hybrid flushing program so that they can piggyback both the water treatment plant and what's the other one, Ms. Coleman?
The hydrant.
There you go. They're gonna piggyback those together. They're gonna partner on those. Um, let's see. First sewer, uh, lift stations, they're researching additives for grease layers of the lift station. They're working on adding some information to people's utility bills, um, about what not to pour down their drains because they're seeing a lot of, um, grease in their clean outs in a certain part of town. And, uh, maybe people there just don't know they shouldn't be pouring grease down the drain.
We've seen, we've seen that firsthand from a business here in town and, and blew out a street, so not, not a good idea. Not a good idea.
So you might see that in your water, your water utility bill. And it looks like wastewater treatment plant. Uh, there was an inspection by Department of Ecology in January. Um, there was a report that, uh, they may need additional staffing. They were, uh, Department of Ecology identified that there might be additional staffing needs um, for that department. And they are looking at, um, some storage options for some of their equipment.
Ms. Coleman? I just wanna say the Department of Ecology is a wonderful organization in the state of Washington and they make everything so easy and wonderful, um, and make us better. Miss Hall, Mrs. Holland, please continue. I know you do. I just don't, anyway, I'm gonna hold my, I've said enough this week about, or last week about that. Mrs. Holland?
Um, catch basin. Uh, the clean outs are, uh, complete for this year and catch basins at Simron and Gun Club were repaired. Um, I don't know if anybody noticed the great article that the Daily News did on our street replacement program that Ms. Coleman has been plugging away at. But that was, uh, done with grant money. So, um, comes a couple of days ago, so look online for the Daily News and, uh, currently that, um, swapping out the old lighting fixtures for new light bulbs is saving about four thousand dollars a month in city, um, electric bills. Oh, let's see. I wanna skip that, that's kinda boring. Um, oh, the, so parks. Uh, the new metal roof is gonna go on the new gazebo this month. That's pretty exciting. Yes, that's been timed for planner's day and, um, whoever keeps vandalizing and spraying graffiti on things around the park, stop it because it costs us a lot of staff time um, and supplies, but they're getting to it really quickly, so you probably don't know that people are vandalizing because they're Johnny on the spot for getting that cleaned up. Uh, May twenty-fourth is gonna be Public Works Week, so everybody, we can give a big woo-hoo, way to go, Public Works. Um, let's see. Ooh, the exciting parts, grants. Um, so this one, let's see, so Surface Transportation Block Grant Program. So I'm gonna backtrack a little bit here. So that was awarded for Lake Shore Drive for new chip seal and sidewalks. Um, the ask was for eight hundred forty-five thousand. The city's match was hundred thirty-one. Cool project cost was a little under a million. Um, that started in late September. And prior to that project, they would be installing water and sanitary lines on Lake Shore. So those projects have all been running back to back. So that's the thing that seems to be causing the, the ruckus over there with traffic. Um, but we have been awarded a well over three hundred and eighty thousand for, uh, bike lane on Gun Club and a pedestrian sidewalk. So that's kind of exciting. And then, um, exit twenty-one because that gets, doesn't get enough attention. Uh, so they have, um, Public Works, Ms. Coleman, has applied, um, for a raised grant. So that was submitted in February. They should hear back in August and that was for twenty-two million.
Yeah, this is the third year that we've applied for it. We've been working on exit twenty-one for forty years. We've gone out for funding to our state, for our federal for four years. So we're, we've applied again and every time we apply, it's fourteen, eleven million, eleven twenty-four million.
That's all we needed. We had the rest.
So, and who knows if you get that grant a year after that, the project cost is gonna be twenty-five million. So every time we keep applying for it, you know, that's more money that the city has to support it, so. Um, but we are applying for multiple grants and we're getting some money from the counties. Um, Calhoun County was gracious and gave us enough funding, um, to be able to pay for the engineering. And then we also have to have the hog money that we keep granting all the property, the construction and engineering as well.
Ooh, it's
Couple millions of dollars.
Multi-million. See, you should read these. You're way more excited than I am.
I spent years on.
Well, and that's, that, that's a fact. And so there's a lot of times that you have applied a, uh, several times for multi-million, fourteen million to the, what, what did she send it to Murray?
Yeah.
Yes. Office, but that didn't happen, um. So, uh, one, one of the other thing, well, and, and here's the thing is what would be incredibly helpful is the things that are impactful is when you contact folks like, um, our legislators, not just Woodland City Council, but legislators like, um, Orketz and Braun and, um, uh, yeah, Peter Abarno. Um, i- if you contact our legislators that legislate for, or that represent this legislative district, they represent us and they represent our interests. And if you contact your state legislators, um, they can advocate on behalf of us. So it's one thing for the mayor and council to go up to Olympia and say, hey, can you give us money? It's something entirely different if you can get your, um, other electeds to speak on your behalf and try to help us get funding because we all know there's And try to help us get funding because we all know there's an issue. And it shouldn't have to be a catastrophic event before anybody pays attention to our exit. So that's something I would, I would suggest, um, folks doing and all of them, if you go to the, um, state website. They're usually, it's pretty easy to find who is your legislator. Uh, but then, uh, some of the other things that, um, Ms. Coleman's working on. Uh, just as a reminder, that, that, um, the. One over there on West Scott is gonna come back around. So after Lake Shore is done. There's a little bit more that needs to happen over on West Scott, so expect that sometime when the weather's a little bit nicer and. That's about all I have to say.
All right. Thank you, Mrs. Holland. Mr. Smith.
One of the things that, uh. I can't pronounce his name, Abar, Abarno. Uh, there's things that, uh, when we go to talk to them, where. One of the things that he brought up was the, uh, transportation benefit district. And how that benefits us in. Putting us in line to be able to get money easier. And I know the council voted. Cause we can do a council action to put, what was it, point three percent or something?
One tenth of one percent.
One tenth of one percent. We voted yes on that, but it did go out to the ballot and it was voted down, um, but that's three times. That's something that is huge to be able to help us, um, and help our legislators fight for us as well, so.
Any other questions for Mrs. Holland or Ms. Coleman? Ms. Coleman.
I was gonna say, we have kind of a crowd here tonight. I'm really excited, like, to talk and you can spread the word, um. So with our, with our budget that we have for our transportation dollars, we literally have, we have a couple hundred thousand in there for our roads. And, um, since I came here, we went out and did a road survey and it's fifteen years behind, or behind maintenance on our road for, for about fifteen years. So when you see chip sealing, we're doing that, that's what we have. Very inexpensive, it's not the best way to do it, but we're trying to do what we can with what we have. So the majority of the funding and the, as the millions of dollars that we brought in the last four to five years have gone to a project. So when you see. You're gonna see West Scott Avenue shut down from Pacific, always Sherman Way with very limited traffic for almost a solid, probably three months. But what you have to realize is the full depth reclamation. So you have to tear up the entire road, entire road bed. Um, we've tried to do it where we just have people just go through and have one lane open, um. People go the wrong way, um, the police have sat out there and watched people just drive down the wrong way. We're afraid somebody's gonna die. So unfortunately, we have to close the road off because people can't obey the traffic signals or, or the, the. The rules when we try to make it better for everybody else. So, um, it is very inconvenient to close the road off. But when you're going in there replacing water lines and sewer lines and road beds and putting in brand new curb gutter sidewalk. That's the fastest way you can do it. It's just close road down, get it done and then open it back up. Um, it's the most economical for your funds too, because you've allowed your contractor to come out and do it in a faster amount of time versus. Getting that project done by only having one half of the road open. But, um, all the roads that you see done here in Woodland in the past four years, um, have been done with grant dollars. And the chip seals are the only ones that we've done, um, without their, the use of grant dollars. So when you see these huge projects going on. That, that West Scott Avenue was three million dollars just for the road, not for the water as well. You haven't got a million dollars of water going in there. We just completed two railroad, railroad crossings. Those were over a half million and three quarters of a million dollar each. So they're very, very expensive projects and they are inconvenience, um, for you guys to be able to have to go around and take other routes. But I'm telling you, it's, it's in the long run, it's beneficial for the city and it. It's not the city's pack dollars. You're, we're using ten percent of those dollars to go towards these matching grant funds, so. If you can just bear with us and get the word out and say, yeah, it's inconvenient. Now you have to drive around an extra couple of miles, but in the long run. You're, it's gonna benefit you because you can maintain that road. You're gonna have that a fifteen years of good road and. So, just wanted to throw that out there.
Mr. Smith.
You, uh, touched on that road closure and I'd like to say one thing regarding safety of, uh, construction workers. Uh, road crew, people die every year. And, uh, road closures are the safest way to keep those people from getting hurt. So road closures aren't inconvenienced, but if. You could bring back one life by closing that road, every day of the week I would close that road to save the life of one person.
Thank you, Mr. Smith. All right, uh, moving on to Calhoun, okay, I can counsel governments. I, uh, had an incident. Uh, at my home and I was at the doctor during this meeting, so I asked Mr. Boyce to attend in my absence due to my incapacitation. Yes.
Right, so I did attend.
It was a little bit late notifying you.
So I, I don't have a lot to report from that meeting, uh, I went through a few budget items. Uh, had some comments on employee health insurance. Uh, they did have, uh, some discussion regarding regional planning of transportation networks. Uh, there's going to be more coming on that. Uh, but if you're going to this meeting, uh.
Thank you, thank you, Mr. Boyce. Thanks for, thanks for jumping in. Uh, and for those of you that don't know, the Calhoun County of Governments helps us out with some of our funding mechanisms when it comes to some of those grant dollars that, uh, Tracy was just discussing. I think it, not all of our grant dollars are ran through them to us from the state, are they? Or just a portion of our grant dollars are ran through that organization to us? Uh, the cog. I'm talking about the cog. Not all, but ju-just certain ones, right?
Grant dollars and, and I know a lot of people got up here and spoke about, um. South Peeken, South Peeken disaster, disaster, or we bypassed the traffic and that we've applied for grants from South Peeken for three years in a row. So we are applying for it and give this year and we'll just continue on. You gotta keep going, but I will say that. When you apply on a regular basis for grants, they're not gonna give them to you every year. So you just gotta keep plunking away and keep applying and hope that your life, you miss that three-year cycle. Jennifer knows about this and you go in fourth year and they're like, okay, you're gonna get the money. So we just keep on plunking away and. And know that we'll eventually get the money for that, cause we sure in fact don't have a budget of two hundred thousand to be able to do that. We can do a. Small little dead end road for fifty. Anyway, so yeah, we just, we'll just keep plunking away and we know it's bad. Uh, we have some new product that we're gonna be putting out on. Uh, South Peeken and North Peeken because we have some pretty. A lot of potholes there, but the thing is you can't fill in the potholes when they're so shallow because it just keeps popping out unless you cut up the whole road. But we have a new product that we're gonna be using out there that will work that wash stops using on Interstate five. That we think will kind of smoothen, smoothen the blow, um, until we can get that road completely done. But there are better than being it when you shut the road off or just the local people not, and that's the current traffic route and walk speed, so then they're all back to the other route, so. We're trying to limit how we close roads so we can still get around town.
Thank you, Ms. Coleman. Uh, anything for downtown Woodland revitalization? Why, I've got you.
Um, no, that meeting is not scheduled until, I believe, uh, the fifteenth or nineteenth.
Okay, got you. Thank you. And A W C and Legislative right now, Association of Washington Cities. Uh, they are heavy on the session right now, which will be ending on April ninth, um, and we anticipate a lot of housing. Um, mandates or changes in law coming down on us, so, um, standing by for that. Uh, moving on to reports of officers, uh, I met with Clark County Mayor's last night for our monthly meeting, which was great, uh, learned a lot. Um, also took another spa, uh, fall in front of everyone, which was fantastic. Um, I just can't seem to stay upright these days. I don't know what my problem is. Uh, my wife warned me not to go, but I didn't listen. And maybe I should have. Um, we have, let's talk about transportation, maybe just because that seems to be some hot topics of folks that, that have, uh, stepped up here. In twenty sixteen, when I was elected, we started, um, there was already a project in process, which was the West Scott. Underpass, um, the community came together. They had two million dollars that was given to them from the state to do a project to connect. West Scott with East Scott again, because the freeway came through in the fifties and, and cut the town in half. Um, when I came in, the community was very adamant that they wanted to go underneath I five and connect. That's, that's what they wanted, so that's what I fought for. Um, unfortunately, at that time in twenty sixteen, it was about sixty-five million dollars to do that project. They were gonna have to raise I five about twenty-five to twenty-seven feet up. Uh, to get that under there. Uh, it was a huge, heavy lift, no pun, um. And we sat in this room, Mr. Boyce, myself, Federal Highways, uh, this Wash Dot, uh, and a number of other folks were in that room. And we just could not understand why this community was pushing for this when they are sitting there at the, at the table telling us, we're not going to allow you to do that. Um, why are you still asking us for this? And because my response was, that's what the community wants. So that's what we're here fighting for. Um, we came to a stalemate for about a year, uh, just because I, I was holding my ground until we took a step back and said, okay, what exactly? Can we do to make the traffic flow better instead of just getting into, uh, um. Being, being a petulant child and just right fit because we weren't getting what we wanted. Um, so we, we made some. Arrangements. We moved some of the money that was left over from that project. A lot of the studies had already been done. We just had to update a few of them and move everything to exit twenty-one. And that has become our focus since then. So since about late twenty seventeen, exit twenty-one has been our focus. And, um, we've slowly gotten to a point now where we're able to apply for a few times now for funding and I really fingers are crossed that. Um, this next go around with the new Congresswoman's office is going to be our, our champion moment to finally get some funding. Um, it is for signalized intersection. It is not for roundabouts. That is what we are going out for bid for. Um, that's what council has asked for, um, so that's what we're pushing for. However. Just like Department of Ecology, we could be told, never mind, you're getting what we give you. Um, but they will not let, allow us to have a project until we have the money in hand. Um, so there is, there is a project. But all these other pieces have to come together. And when we talk about, uh. South Peeken Road and the challenges there, we, this team over here at this table does a wonderful job of trying to find. Solutions, not just for one thing, but for multiple things, so we can put our hands onto multiple pots of money and not just one pot of money. Uh, when you look at Peeken, that is part of our trail system within the city. So therefore we have a recreational component that we can draw upon to help us with some of those curbs or maybe the bike lane that will be required. But with that comes more, more requirements and more, uh, more studies. Uh, Ms. Ray Keen, Mrs. Ray Keen was standing up here this evening saying, hey, don't forget about this one, this one little check the box, because if you don't check that box, you're not gonna get it. Um, we've applied multiple times for safe routes to school along five oh three to, uh. Put curb gutter and sidewalk out there and to widen the road to allow for children to get to school safely. Uh, we've been denied three times for that now. Right, is that correct, three times? Yeah. So in the, in this last year, there was a lot of work that was done behind the scenes to get it to a point where, yes, we're gonna give you the money to, all the way down to getting right away. And having the whole thing completely ready to go and we were still told no. Um, so it's just, we just gotta keep fighting. We just gotta keep fighting for it and we keep trying to find those solutions of, of what's important. Um, we'll be having the Congresswoman out, uh, in May or early June, uh. To see exactly what our challenges are. We did that with, uh, Congresswoman Herrera Butler as well. Uh, we took her on a tour of the city. We've done that with all our legislators, uh, the port and the city and the school district and the fire department. We all, you drove vans for us. Um, at one point, I think that was twenty seventeen, uh, we invited everyone down and took them around to explain to them what our challenges were here in Woodland. Uh, we've got the bottoms, we have the freeway, we have upriver, we have the city, and then we have this. This big, huge road that goes through our city and the challenge that comes with that. Um, in trying to do that at a time when school was letting out or the port was letting out so they could understand what that traffic problem was, um. Just to kind of, uh, drive it home that, hey, we need some help. So we're creative. Ms. Coleman has done a wonderful job with leveraging our dollars, uh, before her attendance here. Um, and she'll tell you, we spent our entire roadway budget. Other directors have spent an entire roadway budget on a very small piece of road. And we had nothing else to do for the year. Um, Ms. Coleman's done a great job of, of taking that little bit of money and leveraging it for more dollars. Um, and in the process, we have created a lot of partnerships to include the county, uh, as one, I can count them as one of our partners now. Um, and helping us try to find a solution for Clark, Calhoun and the city of Woodland, um. I know that doesn't answer all the questions in the back about transportation, but it is. It is a priority. We just don't have anything to show for it yet, but we're working on it. We're working on it. And with that, I'll, I'll be quiet now. Mr. Boyce. My wife wouldn't say that, but yeah.
So I wanted, wanted to remind some council, next Monday, we'll be, uh, having a special meeting in order to fill the vacant. City council seat. Uh, we emailed all of the applicants and I believe we have five applicants. Uh, they've all received the set of the questions. I, I did have a. Uh, email from council member Berth, he was. Uh, discussing maybe adding a unofficial question.
Yeah, I was just asking what would, uh. Why would we pick them over the other applicants?
Uh, yeah, why would? What would make us, uh, want to pick you over the other applicant's first question? And so we need consensus from city council to add another question, so it is. We seek consensus or we wanna leave the questions as is.
Mr. Smith.
I think you pointed out the, uh, two minutes. Prior to that they're supposed to get to do their spiel. I think that might help maybe describe why they. Should be chosen. We missed that on the last one, but it was in the council rules. So I think maybe that would address that type of, uh, question that you're asking.
With the question or the two minute at the beginning enough?
I'm okay with it too, I think, but I like the idea that, um, Councilman. Smith is saying that we do have two minutes. That's gonna add to that meeting. That's another ten minutes of talking. So I think that might be the place to. To encourage them to do that.
Okay, so.
Maybe that's your introduction to them of. You, your instruction to them is tell us why. We should pick them.
Gotcha.
Yeah, a little bit about yourself and. You know, yeah, rather than. Because I'm sure people are gonna. Use that time to pitch their background, right? So, like, I don't care either way if we add another question, but it just seems like maybe that could be. For now, yeah, that could be kind of slid in there.
Okay, seen some consensus with that.
Um, councilor Smith jumped into my other item, uh, we do council rules Tuesday. There's a two-minute, um. Uh, period of time at the beginning, uh, the candidates can get up and say whatever they like and then two minutes closing the call, so. Uh, so four minutes for that. So with that, we're scheduled to start at seven P M. Uh, I think we'll have the agenda out Wednesday. It should look identical to the last agenda. Um, and we'll make sure council members get all of the applications in hand. And begin at the meeting, so everyone understands after. Interviews will take place in public, will be online and whatnot. Public's welcome to come and attend. Uh, council can go into executive session then to discuss the qualifications of the applicants. Come out, make a nomination and vote. Uh, then the new council member would take their seat at the next regular council meeting, uh. I think it's March twenty.
Yes, that's correct.
Uh, and we'll be. Fully, fully staffed.
All right. Okay.
Thank you.
That's it. All right. Thank you, Mr. Boyce. Uh, Ms. Randolph, anything? All right, uh, Mrs. Hogan, anything to add this evening? Ms. Chief Kelly.
Yeah, there was a few things I forgot to put in the, uh, public safety. It was, was while we were out our, out the door. So, uh, a bit of good news. We did offer, the city did offer an officer, uh, conditional letter of hire. Um, hopefully, yeah, a couple of technical hoops to jump through, but as I cross my fingers. And he does well in the next couple of days and we should know by the end of the week whether that individual's passed the application process. And we'll offer him the job. On Friday, we have a floor award set up for one lateral entry officer. And we're crossing our fingers, hopefully, hopefully he does well on that and that. If we hire him, it'll give me a full roster and I'm not gonna go with this.
Since, since when?
This is the first time a roster's full since I've been here. So it was, we're gonna.
All right.
We will thank you.
Watch out.
People at Woodland are gonna get arrested.
Not our citizens. Maybe those that come here to do bad.
Being the throwdown guy to talk to the chamber, I always throw those, those, uh, those things. So, thank you very much.
Thank you, Chief. Uh, Travis Goddard. Two minutes.
Um, so. The four quarter reports for twenty twenty two is available on the city, on the park website. Uh, we also got an update from the city's attorney about the interlocal agreement with Calhoun's camping discussion. And I have to say I'm extremely excited that they have taken our comments. That hard and they seem fully engaged in thinking about. How we're creating useful working relationships with us. So I'm super excited about that. Also an update. So we are. Uh, working on implementing cloud permitting, using online permitting system. Uh, Amanda and, uh, some of the other clerks have been working and the code enforcement authors have been working very diligently at this. And we should be hopefully within a couple of weeks of doing some. Real life exercises and then hopefully not long after that, we'll be going live on our code enforcement and building modules. So we'll be working on our land use module after that. So if you have any questions or you want to see a demonstration of that, uh, we encourage you to come into City Hall and, uh, get to sleep. Next to Amanda or what's that, for Jade, and hopefully we'll walk you through that and we'll get excited about that. Cause I'm super excited about the quality of service that we'll be able to provide once that's online. We got a super good deal and it seemed like an awesome content, uh, awesome product. Um, also, um, the Cardi Hill mining overlay request in Clark County. I needed to give you an update on that. And the update is there is no update yet. So we filed an appeal on it and it has not been scheduled before the county, uh, for the Clark County Commissioners. And as soon as I know more information about that, we will immediately update the city's website and give you an email so that you can get the word out. Um, but checking the city's website, because we will literally keep that updated. So, um. Check there first. The Calhoun's County flood hazard mitigation plan, uh, Calhoun County, we're working closely with them. And they're doing a great job updating this. I believe it's been thirty years since the plan was last updated. And they're putting in a lot of period effort in getting this done. And they're working with all the small jurisdictions. And so it's been very productive and we're really happy with that effort. Uh, and again, it's another example of how Calhoun's County seems to take any of this community engagement. With the smaller jurisdictions apart. So I'm super happy, um, with that effort as well. So keep an eye out on our landing for that as well. Climate resiliency, we did the presentation for the pilot project with the planning commission. I recognize several of the faces in the audience today. And, um, I was really happy with that presentation. Cause we got a lot of really good information from these consultants for free. And they provided us a lot of good feedback and the items that are on the agenda tonight will kind of. Test that, uh, how you'd like us to proceed with updating the comprehensive plan and using that information while we have it. So, um. If you haven't watched that, I encourage you to call up the planning commission in February sixteen. And spend the time watching it. It is a long meeting, but I think it was very productive discussion. And, um. I encourage you to take a look at it. So, um, I also want to point out that our web page is constantly being updated. So if you have any questions, any project that comes in on the landing site. It goes up on the website and the building stuff should follow when we get the new cloud permitting online. So. We're doing our best to be as transparent and thoughtful. And that was the counsel from the mayor's goal for the last couple of years. So. Um, please be an eye out on our web page.
Thank you, Mr. Gard. Ms. Coleman? Do you have anything else?
No.
Well done. I would stand up, but I can't. So, and with that, the time is eight forty six. Let's take, um. Yeah, uh, let's, let's take about a, a eight minute break and then we'll come back and get into the, uh, action items. Yeah. There we go. All right. You ready? All right. And, uh. Some of our folks have already left. Uh, we're back in session. I just want to, uh, bring this up real quick too. And that is the, when we talk about traffic at exit twenty one. And we've got the Cardi Hill project that potentially could be happening. Um, that's at least nine gate more trucks a day coming through that intersection. So all the more reason that we need some community engagement. Uh, especially when we start talking about that potential mining operation over in Clark County. Um, so we need to, we need to be vigilant on that, please. And with that, we have come to consent items.
Motion to approve consent item.
Second.
Move by council member Smith, second and by council member Rounds. Mrs. Hogan, may we please take the roll?
Councilmember?
Aye.
Member Hall?
Aye.
Councilmember Halling?
Aye.
Councilmember Doughty?
Aye.
Councilmember Smith?
Aye.
Councilmember Round?
Aye.
The ayes have it. The consent items have passed. Moving on to action items. Action item C accessory dwelling unit authorized mayor to enter into an A D U affidavit of residency agreement.
Think we need more info on this. Can we, uh?
Are you asking Mr. Goddard to explain?
Yes.
Mr. Goddard?
So the existing city code, um, municipal. So seventeen forty six, twenty five, twenty two. Requires certain standard for the accessory dwelling unit, which would be the existing code that required condition who's permit. And it has standards in that section. Part of that is an enforcement agreement. Um, I think the term we actually use is a residency agreement. From the app indicating that they will operate accessory dwelling unit in accordance with city code. We currently do not have any form. And so rather than trying to reinvent the wheel every time somebody applies for an accessory dwelling unit. This form is an attempt, uh, between staff and returning to use, I believe it was the city of Tacoma with the model. Um, and so this is trying to provide some structure where the code currently doesn't happen. Sorry, is that an after question? Still looking at, I'm going to wait until it's gone.
I think this might lump in with our, uh. Discussion on housing that we were wanting to have with, uh. Further workshop. It's probably going to be a workshop where it's a lot longer than. What we're currently talking about right now. So. I, I would like to delay this or bring it up at that workshop before we take a vote on it. That's my opinion.
All right, motion to table.
Second.
Move by council member Burke to table action item C. Uh, do you have a date in mind? Council will state that there must, it must be brought back up at a certain period of time.
I don't have a date.
Uh, next available workshop?
That's kind of what I, after we, I would like to table it till after our discussion for housing.
Okay, uh, motion on the floor by council member Burke, uh, to table action item C to the next available workshop, second by council member Smith, council member Burke.
I don't know.
Council member Smith?
No, I don't think I have anything else.
Further discussion? Mrs. Doughty?
Um, I know we said workshop, but I thought. And correct me if I'm wrong, that we wanted more than just like a workshop thrown into the meeting. Like I think we wanted an actual just. Special meeting for just that topic. To not just fall into a regular.
For the housing action plan that was brought forward. Okay. I think when we went back and discussed it, we were going to bring pieces back at a time. Um, to go over. So it wasn't so overwhelming and talking about everything all at once. Um. I guess I missed the part where we wanted to have a special meeting. I missed that part.
And that's why I said, correct me if I'm wrong, but I thought that was what council had discussed was just having a special housing meeting.
And I thought we talked about. Meeting with the, uh, planning commission also.
Yes, we're, we're waiting.
Some out stuff?
Yeah, we're waiting for the new council member to get on board before that gets scheduled to make sure that they can participate as well.
Cause I think this is going to tie into. Funding as well when it comes to housing because it's an extremely big push for the state. So. Um, I don't want to just kick it down the road and say no. I would rather have a educated discussion on it.
Uh, Mr. Hall?
I, I would agree with that. I think we have a lot of issues, some brought up here tonight, and there's other issues that I've heard. Uh, concerning that and. And the idea of. Um. Creating a. An expectation by builders that maybe we aren't wanting to create. So we, we just have some things we need to talk through. And I agree with the motion that we should. Put it off a while. I think we need to get to the bottom of those.
Okay.
Workshop.
What, Mr. Goddard, can I, uh, council, I've asked that you suspend the rule so I can speak.
Well, just a second.
Thank you. Mr. Goddard, is there a timeline or a process that you would see fit to bring a housing action plan back? At a full workshop, portions of a workshop, what would you advise the council?
So the presentation for the workshop that we have coming up later. Hopefully I have raised this question out for you to dig deep about that. After you look at kind of what's on my work plan and the thoughts that I'm juggling in the air. So then. Hopefully I can get to that question and you might give, provide me the answer. At the end of that conversation, I want you to know what's in my mind. And I'm kind of with that on the presentation.
Okay. Mrs. Doughty?
Well, I guess. My question is. Can we have some open discussion rather than just presentation? Before you do all that work and have presentation, like I think. After our last presentation with you, I think wheels got turning and then we went to Olympia and heard some things like I think. We have wheels turning and rather than you keep. Presenting things and spending time putting things forward. A time where we're just able to kind of throw out some things that our brains are thinking. And I think that's kind of where I'm at. Rather than you continuing to just throw things and I'm just like. Processing and still have things that I'd like to tell you. I think I get overwhelmed in that sense where I'm like, okay, wait a second. I still want to tell you what I'm thinking and I. It just becomes too much. And so I think that open discussion with planning commission there and starting there would help me. And I don't know, I kind of felt like some of the other council members felt the same way, like if we could just have an open discussion rather than. Presentation first.
Sure. And, and I think you have it exactly right because the presentation that I made before you had the second reading. It was a summary of what planning commission had gone through. So in fact, it was. The third or fourth version of that presentation and discussion. Yeah. And you were two years after that presentation. Or after that conversation had started. So you're, you're exactly right is. You were, I'm trying to present at the end of the process instead of turn. So.
And I think several of us are new. And so if we can have open discussion, I think that would just be. Maybe beneficial to both sides so that we're not doing. Backwork and just spinning wheels for a little while. I mean, does that make sense?
True.
Okay.
I don't know if that.
You want that to be part of the, um, retreat with. Finding commission. Once the new member gets on board, you want that to be a topic of conversation. Okay.
Right. Just.
Understood.
I, I think that would be a great starting point rather than rework.
Okay, perfect. Uh, so motion on the floor is to table action item C until. Um, an avail, the next available workshop to discuss the housing action plan. Um, any further discussion? All right, seeing none. Mrs. Hogan, may we please take the roll on action item C?
Councilmember Hall?
Aye.
Councilmember Doughty?
Aye.
Councilmember Smith?
Aye.
Councilmember Halling?
Aye.
Councilmember Round?
Aye.
Councilmember?
Aye.
The ayes have it. Action item C has been tabled to the next available workshop. And the time is now nine oh four and we are going into a workshop, uh, with two items, comp plan update, public participation plan. And, uh. Item E, comp plan update, population projections. Mr. Goddard?
Thank you, um. So. They load. Bottom right hand side. So the presentations that I have for you are really quick. I'll try and run through these. Yeah, if you don't mind, I might try and do the first of them both at the same time before we do the conversation. And we, um, we devoted the next slide. So the reason is, uh, part of it, why we're talking about comprehensive plan updates, growth management app. Requires periodic updates to make sure that we are consistent with changes in the law. But also that we consider development break, development activities in the community. Cause our comp plan was adopted in twenty sixteen, so it's basically been, um, seven years since that was fully, um, adopted. We did some work in twenty nineteen of in the family of the growth boundary. Pride, the growth management act will require to update the comp plan. For Clark County by twenty twenty five and Calhoun County by twenty twenty six. So we kind of cover both of those. So we could select the one or the other. Depending on what you want to do. So, uh, next slide. So some of the considerations that we're having to deal with and that is Calhoun's County development patterns. In the bottoms and up the water river road are affecting us. We also have a development of land within the city. There are some changes in the law. We're grappling with the land supply that's within our. City and the urban growth boundary. Plus I know that you've been wrestling with utility rates and the, and affordability issues. So. Those are all issues that are going to affect this discussion. Next slide. So the community development work plan is, is we kind of have two sides. There's ongoing applications that applicants come in. The next big ticket items that affect longer, long range discussion. Um, we're expecting a shoreline update request. From an applicant who owns the property by the season street grid. Um, and the wastewater treatment plan. We also, um, there's potential annexation on Green Mountain Road. By the moving baseball fields and believe that they're preparing to request an annexation to the city. Also, we're dealing with kind of retooling our code program, which is our small miscellaneous code. Fixes, um, and the socket and the sign code. We've been trying to do that for months. We just haven't been able to. On top of that, we're dealing with the Calhoun County flood hazard mitigation plan, which is ongoing. The master plan for the bottoms and the issues that we're trying to engage the county in. And also under the growth management act, part of our. Regular update is, uh, critical area ordinance update. We also have this pilot project and these issues associated with climate change and we're seeing goal, housing goal. That we kind of worked with the, um, previous work and, um, we talked about doing a separate workshop on that. So those were kind of some of the balls that are in here. Next slide. And so on the left hand column, these are the comprehensive plan. Elements or chapters from the comp plan, uh, intro and vision, public involvement. The land use and that's going to be a big part of the. Bottoms master plan is going to affect that housing, economic development, transportation, parks, recreation. Capital facility, energy, utilities, environment and growth management compliance. On the right hand side are the issues that we are potentially going to talk about. And the mayor asked me prepared, asked me to prepare the public participation plan. To look at a twenty twenty three abbreviated update of our comprehensive plan. And, um. Why you would do that, I'll get to in the next couple of slides. But the idea. Is that we would focus on looking at the climate resilience and stuff that was discussed. And our capital facilities plan with our water and sewer. And our capital facilities plan with our water and sewer plan have been updated since the comp plan was adopted. And so we need to um do some updates on those sections. There's also nothing in there really for emergency services or emergency planning, which kind of gets back to the climate resilience and stuff. And that conversation, there's some pretty big increments that we can fix. Um, energy and utilities as uh you're dealing with utilities and the capital facilities investment. We need to kind of tie that back into the comprehensive plan. And land use development patterns on our master plan. And as the court. Kindly pointed out, that is, uh, the questions of equity and inclusion are. Some of those boxes that we make sure that our comp plan checks so that we qualify for grants in the future. Next slide. So, uh, one more click for it in multiple places. The comprehensive plan, if we do a twenty twenty three kind of abbreviated update, we can choose the the critical area update at the same time. I don't necessarily think that we're gonna do a ton of work in the critical areas section. Um, because they were recently written and um. We might be able to get away because we don't have a significant amount of critical area occurrences within the city. But it's something that we could either do with the comp plan update or we could push that off and do it at a separate time. Um, we also theoretically could push the comp plan up. To twenty five, twenty six, but if we do it in twenty twenty three. We might not have to go back and do a major rewrite discussion until twenty twenty eight. I'll get into some of the implications of that in a minute. So the next issue that we're gonna have to deal with is the county, which is the yellow. Whether the county is gonna do an update based upon the update that we do, because we learned previously. In twenty eighteen, twenty nineteen, if we want to expand or expand our urban growth boundary, no matter how much work we do. If the county isn't willing to entertain a comprehensive plan update, we're just wasting our time. So the question is. Um, is it a comp plan update on the county party due to the bottoms master plan on the county party? We're gonna have to engage them to make sure that they're engaged with us so that our timing fits. Uh, next one. Because if they do bottoms master plan, then the logical step would be for them to do a comp plan update. Which leads us, the next three clicks are, do we do ours with theirs, do we do ours after theirs? Or do we just wait at some time in the future to a comp plan update? So under this scenario, really, we could do it quickly and maybe make it to twenty twenty eight before we kind of have to be engaged. Or we wanna do a quick one now and a quick one in twenty twenty five and another one in twenty twenty six. We don't necessarily wanna be doing the same work again and again and again. Cause we're waiting for the county or we're trying to get in before the county or we're waiting till after the county's done. Especially when you have people that work with major investments and they're trying to get some direction on some cooperation. We could, I could literally. Talk to you guys about this year after year after year and looking at these scenarios. But it's not a very productive use of our time and it's not a very productive use of your time. So what's also important to remember is. By twenty twenty six, it will be ten years since the last full conference plan update and the next click peak. We really would have to spend about fifty to a hundred thousand dollars worth of taxpayer money on a consultant. To fully engage the community and kind of repeat all of these processes and um. By doing in twenty twenty three or a quicker abbreviated one to buy us sometime. We're saving ourselves some considerable money. And also you readily kind of putting a little pressure on Calhoun County to. Start working with us or or really excited because they are starting to work with us and they're starting to speak in logic. So we could actually ensure that that progress is made going forward by doing that. Next slide. So, um. And we wanna do a complete comprehensive plan update. This is part of a question. If we don't do an abbreviated one this year, we're working a different hundred thousand dollars worth of investment. That's above and beyond staff time, which I estimated to be about two thousand worth of staff time. So it gets pretty expensive, just like in twenty twenty two, when we had hired consultants. What a twenty twenty three abbreviated update would do is it keeps us under the radar because we haven't had a significant amount of development yet. I know you hear from people a lot that traffic is getting bad and getting super crowded. The reality is, is we have, we've had a couple of commercial, small industrial developments. But we've literally had no residential development in the last three years, the last five years. We've been having very slow residential growth. We have a bunch of projects that have been approved. But they haven't constructed. So all of that chatter that's complaining about the amount of development that's occurring. And part of that is mental because we've got a bunch of approvals, but they haven't built anything. So people are freaking out now. Wait until stuff actually gets built, then they'll be super freaking out because right now the trips aren't on the list.
I was gonna ask you this question earlier when this came up. Um, how many permits were issued for residential homes in the last two years?
So we had zero in twenty twenty three and I think we heard twenty twenty two and I think we had six in twenty twenty one. And I think we did twenty six the year before that. I think we developed fifty a year, eighteen and nineteen. So it's been pretty slow and I'll, when I get to the population stuff, you'll get a good visual idea of. What population room reflects and you can project. Population as an industrial and commercial development, but we deal with anyway.
You say we had no development last year?
Residential development.
What about those houses that were put on Washington Street?
They were actually permitted in twenty twenty one and those in twenty twenty two. So we permit activity. The other thing is, is it keeps us in compliance. It would be a minor, small course correction. Um, and but it allows us to avoid or postpone that major rewrite for a few years. Simply by making sure that we're on the correct course. It also puts an emphasis on the bottom. And until that occurs, you really don't know. How much or what we're gonna do for expanding urban growth boundary. Cause we're not sure what kind of move the county is in to accommodate that kind of growth progression. Okay, next slide. Um, so the public participation plan, the webpage is already up, it's open. Um, we could start having open houses starting in April. Mainings and many customers can literally go out any month now. Finding permission meaning will be done monthly. People need to kind of. Get some direction on what chapters you want us to focus on in this effort and um. If you see any interruptions, do you wanna do a longer drawn out process? Clark County is just starting their twenty twenty five update and they're expecting twenty twenty four months. Do you wanna do something similar to that or do you wanna try and focus on? Giving us to the finish line and updating your advice at extra time. Uh, super dive or you wanted to wait the discussion until later, but you you readily could push it out twenty twenty six. That'll save us the workload for three years, the work with the county on the so final goodbye.
Has the county built homes? How many specifically have they done? And what are the chances of getting the county to maybe help fund some of our road improvements? Or the amount of homes that they've built or possibly a third entrance onto the freeway out toward the bottoms?
So I don't know the exact number of of. Housing that have been developed in the county or what kind of commercial industrial improvement they have developed. Cause it's kind of a moving window and and kind of like getting us broke at night. See glimpses of stuff as it flashes by, but you're not sure whether it. Whether it's everything or not. Um, the rule of thumb that we used in twenty nineteen when we were doing our discussion is. They were approving two houses in the school district, perfect one that we approved. And um, we know in the bottom that they're approving a significant number of lots. And they not don't necessarily have houses built on them yet, but they have a lot more capacity in the bottom. Than almost many lots, I believe, that we have in the city that have been approved. So. We're having, sorry, I don't know what exactly the concern is, I'm going to be built.
Oh, sorry. How much are the impact fees uh coming from the county homes to the schools?
So the county does not currently collect impact even and that is part of the discussion. We would do the local agreement whether or not it will start accommodating uh or mitigating for those impacts in other ways.
Uh, you're earlier a question about when to start. But I like the idea of starting, especially this public piece. In twenty twenty three, rather than putting it off because I think. What I'm seeing is we need to get the pulse of the community. We need to hear from the citizens. What they really want it to look like as we develop. And I think if we put it off. We're we're gonna all of a sudden be in a jam and then it's gonna be a lot of work, a lot of money, it's gonna be hard to. Get that and and we will have not heard from the people. That to me, that's a critical pieces to hear from the people, what they want it to look like. So this piece I think is huge for them.
Well, I also think as we work with the county, we need to have that piece in place as well. It's what our community wants as we try to move forward with trying to get more. For our schools and for our town. I have a question. So I remember. Sitting through the previous comprehensive plan. Discussions and it doesn't seem like it was that long ago. It 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 was, but I that so when Amanda was here, Amanda Smaller. She worked with the consultant that worked with Ridgefield. On their compliment. That's what I remember. And it was like fifty thousand dollars this city paid for this guy. And I remember attending a bunch of the open houses and I remember I still have my book. It's like this thick of um that comprehensive plan. And a lot of. What was in there, I felt was incredibly inaccurate. Um. So is that kind of stuff? It it was like wishful thinking is what I remember it being. So is that? Stuff that you're gonna maybe need out of there instead of, because the entire thing was like a sales pitch. To bring people here or bring business here. And I don't think that's. What it should be. I think it's the city's plan moving forward, correct? Not a sales pitch.
So you are talking about the twenty six update or twenty sixteen update, um, not the twenty nineteen, twenty fifteen.
Correct, like the one predating before you worked here.
Yeah, yeah, and. Uh, I mean, because I wasn't here during that time, I I don't know how exactly that worked. And I know that in twenty eighteen, we had. Applicants who were asking for amendments to the comprehensive plan. And I did a considerable amount of work and analysis and I know I threw several citizens to sleep. At public programs along the way with my analysis, my judgment of cheating crazy and they really funded me for. How much time I waited. Everyone about the city and growth and what I said. I recognize that. But I recognize in twenty eighteen that there was a lot of stuff in the comprehensive plan that I personally, as the city view planner. Had questions about and argued with. Um, but I think we all learned from that process, no matter how much time you ever put into it. That um, even the best intentions, you're gonna end up one single time in there every half discussion. But the reality is the having that discussion. Has value in itself just going through that effort and as Melissa brought up tonight, she wants to be part of that conversation. Um, one of the questions here is. I'm trying the way to balance between, okay, doing the minimum necessary and trying to get us around them. Okay. You don't wanna spend the fifty or a hundred thousand dollars to that product again. I could probably do a much better job, but I can't do all of this stuff at the same time and. You know, with the work that was done with the housing and kind of like that, we're trying to fill these pieces in. But I don't necessarily wanna make promises that I can't deliver this until I'm a consultant. But for the most part, I don't like being a consultant because. They think the Ridgefield plan may look like Ridgefield. You get a sales pitch for building in downtown Ridgefield. And yeah, that's one of the problems with trying to deal with the phone. But at some point, there's just not enough capacity for me to. Keep track of, okay, what's happening in the bottoms and how much application is occurring and. Making sure that David has good direction in reviewing these digital projects. Yeah, so I wrestle with that. I'm not really sure that in a way, hopefully get a little more direction here for that.
Yeah, well, I would, I would like you to actually. Make it reflective of what woodland actually is. That reflects woodlenders and not. Sales pitch for development because that's. That's how I always read it. Like I went back and reread it multiple times just to see if I'm remembering things incorrectly and. Think you'd do a way better job than you're already paid for, so.
Mr. Smith?
So you talked about wanting to. Hire a consultant for doing that. So they're just gonna cookie cutter plan. What about like hiring an independent contractor who like works for the city and can consult with you? But take the workload off of you to where.
Who's at the city every day?
Yeah.
I'm talking, okay.
Yeah, that is one way to do it. And and I think maybe a hybrid where. They run the public meetings and they have the conversation and I get to listen. Instead of having to run the meeting and do the analysis and explain what the analysis shows. And lecture, make a presentation, you know, that is kind of meeting and then. That might be.
Might be more cost effective for the city too, because you're getting somebody dedicated fully to that. If you can find somebody, I'm sure there's probably more than one of you, which is crazy to think for me.
Okay, so he can move to the next slide. But I think this is the start of the next presentation. For the next workshop. So this is population. So. Um, the comprehensive plan needs a growth rate of two point three percent. And the good thing is, is the twenty seventeen general sewer plan and the twenty twenty water system plan. Both are consistent by using that two point three percent. I also have a little bit of a presentation about urban growth management plan. These are the interlocal agreements that we have sent back out of. But I want you to have this in context. Because it generally set the direction for the planning decisions. From eighty two and then again in two thousand and two. So it's important for you to understand what the city thought was gonna happen, starting in the eighties. And let's see whether that's true or not. And I think you'll get a, you'll get a really good feeling. That it was a good decision to back to end that interlocal agreement. Cause it really was kind of dumb in a lot of ways. Hopefully you'll see the logic of that. And then the other thing I wanna cover real quick is is office of financial management. It's the state population um. Information and estimates for, uh, I want to understand how they use our population. So the next slide. So this is actual office of financial management, um, population. Estimates for the city. Now, how this works is in twenty ten or two, two thousand, twenty ten, twenty twenty. We have the annual or the ten year census nationally and they take that data and every year. They deal with each jurisdiction. So I fill out a form for Clark County and Calhoun County every year that says. We have four building permits in Clark County and two demolitions. So the total population will increase by two units in Clark County and then in Calhoun. So the total population will increase by two units in Clark County and then in Calhoun County. Sixteen units built and one was destroyed by fire, so they'll. Calculate our population based upon our building activity. So in that case, it's considered an an actual estimate of your population. It's not a projection. A projection means we're guessing looking forward, whereas the population estimate is using past data. And we think our population is growing, but we're more happy with it, so the one is existing. And using building activity, so there's some logical justification for the population number. And of course, by the time you get to twenty nineteen. You're using the twenty ten data and it's been adjusted nine times, so it's starting to get a little more shaky, but it's. Following the logical process, and then in twenty ten, they just do an adjustment, and they were really accurate and don't have to make much. Um change, but this is the population and that, um the actual numbers from the population. Um he, you'll put real quick, you'll see that since twenty twenty, the city's actually been growing at two point seven percent. So based on our comprehensive plan, we're actually pretty close to creating some of the data. That's actually really pretty, really pretty good. Next slide, Pete. So this is the population projection. And those funky lines all represent different documents at different stages, the numbers they expected, so we expected. One of them, one of the documents expected a population of about thirteen thousand five hundred. Um by twenty sixteen, and we clearly that didn't happen, or I'm sorry, twenty thirty six, clearly we're no one near that number. So if you click, Pete. To pass us with our current population number, so you'll see we're actually spending very low inside of all that. So these represent the twenty two thousand and two estimates. By twenty twenty, we estimated that we would have anywhere between sixty two hundred people and eighty four hundred people. And the original nineteen eighty two agreement, the two thousand and two agreement estimated that we would have. About three point six to four percent, so they estimated that we would have about eighty two hundred people by this point. But we clearly were way down at the lower estimate, so.
Because there's nowhere to put them.
Yeah.
Exactly.
Discussions, yeah, we're kind of out of whack from the very beginning, so you can see those higher numbers didn't make much sense. I think it was quite the one time, oh, okay, so um. The again, there's a lot of discussion about how many improved projects we have and how bad, how bad things are getting involving approved projects. The reality is, is many of those projects or residential developments have been built. But I did a projection that if we built fifteen thousand for the next five years. Uh the next click, Pete, gives you an idea, that would actually be slower growth rate than we experienced over the last twenty years. So you're freaking out that there's a lot of developments coming. The reality is, is our next five years are gonna be slower than the previous one.
How how do apartment complexes play into this?
Okay, so the next, next slide, actually, if we add a hundred units per year. Then for the next five years, we would add five hundred units, and that growth rate. Uh if you could begin, we would actually three point nine percent for the next five years. But it still equals over the last twenty years only two point eight percent growth.
So what we're seeing, we're just seeing a massive explosion of of units being developed, but. Due to the lack of development that's occurred, it's still in line with what we've done in the past?
Yeah.
Just making sure I'm tracking here.
Yeah. So we're getting mixed signals here, because theoretically, we've been pretty consistent. Like we projected since twenty sixteen, we're actually in the ballpark where we wanted to be. Uh where we expected to be, and the last couple of years, because we've had nothing, we've slowed down. Then we've got a bunch of projects that have come in, and now we appear to be on the upswing, but if you look at your overall trend. The city average goes from three point seven to two point eight percent over twenty five years instead of twenty years. So it might seem like it's significant, but the overall rates, it's pretty consistent with what's been happening the last twenty. But it's like, it's like watching the stock market. You'll freak out one day because it goes up five hundred points, you freak out the next day because it goes down five hundred points. The reality is, is you haven't lost anything since last week, right? So it all seems to allow in the long run. So the next slide, Pete, um. Uh again, I think there's. Sorry, yeah, so again, this represents the three, those two slides that I was showing you with we fifty. Unit per year growth versus a hundred year growth. We're talking actually five hundred people. Five years is the difference in population. So it still only gets us up to about two thousand population. So the question really for you is, are you content with? The discussions going forward using a two point three percent population rate? Would you rather me take a look at a two point seven historical rate? Maybe more aggressive rate or slower rate? Kind of something you're gonna have to consider, give me that policy direction. I think there's one more slide, Pete. And I'd like you to bear in mind that there's a couple other issues that are outside of just this population discussion. And that is our residential land supply is very constrained, so we may have seven hundred units. Coming online in the next five, ten years. But if there's no more residential land after that, we don't plan the urban growth boundary. In ten years, our population is going to flatten out, so we'll have three years of. But black population, well, there's giant pickup, and then we'll have five more years of no population. Because there's no limit to land, land is no longer. No sense. Little into a content that most missing growth. Why is that important? Because your utility needs will grow. Tracy will need to continue to talk to you about. Threat of the waste water treatment, uh threat of the water system, threat of the water treatment plant, because. We have a bunch of industrial and commercial land that's gonna have to be built. And so we're gonna see that growth, but your utility rates that assume. That there's going to be a growth in population, so a growth in commercial users and commercial payers. And industrial users and industrial payers, and what's going to happen is the utility rates if. City continues to grow in commercial and industrial users. But we don't necessarily have that residential leg of the stool. You're gonna have to start looking at your utility rates and reevaluating. Can you build your infrastructure and your capital improvements on just a commercial and industrial leg? You're either gonna have to. Increase the residential rates above the that residential leg of the stool, or you're gonna have to figure out. How to either cut back on your capital improvement or raise your overall utility rate. So it's it's important that you recognize overall population projection is only part of the problem. And I can do those calculations all day long, and I can talk to you about them for hours, and what will happen if you do what. But ultimately, if there's no land to grow. You're gonna have to start dealing with other problems and areas that are totally unrelated to.
The the burden becomes on who's here now forever.
Yes, that's what we've been saying.
Okay.
And so I think the next slide. I draw you back to this because ultimately we have this. Albatross hanging over our head of what's gonna happen with the bottom. What is the county going to work with us to do, and? If they're not willing to take certain steps to help us plan for our future. We're really spinning our wheels, and let's get back to that question. Do we wanna do a twenty twenty three three needed update so that we can buy ourselves some time and see what happens? Or do you want me to dive into all of these and rewrite all of these chapters, and it may take us two years? And if they do a master plan, we might have to start all over, because all of the assumptions we use. Probably would.
Mister Smith. Our zoning, it's already there, um. I feel like we dealt with this with the uh RV park over in Belmont Loop. The developer comes in and they are meeting all of the requirements for the zoning and everything that is done, and they wanna build. Commercial, industrial, or apartment complex. Is that something that we could just outright deny? Or what would be the ramifications if we did just deny it, and they're meeting all of the the requirements that are set forth prior to?
So the developers are required to meet our C D code, and our C D code is what our C D code is. So if they can meet the minimum standards in our C D code, then we are obligated to approve a project. Now, there are extenuating circumstances where we can argue that there can have water or sewer. In a certain pump station or a certain line, that it would prevent them from approving any projects. In other words, they can't get water, enough water out of the water main. That would be a reason for us to deny them, but. The reality is, is you don't deny them. You require them to upgrade the water system to the point where it works for their project. And it may take millions of dollars worth of improvements, in which case, we kill them with kindness. By giving them an approval with. Conditions that they can't proportionally do to make their project. But then the responsibility is on them, okay, work with your neighbor who also wants to develop. If he's willing to pay half the cost, all of a sudden it becomes financially viable on the project moving ahead. So it's not really so much of an issue of denying somebody, but it's helping them understand what are the hurdles and the hoops that they have to deal with. And reports here, they're they're masters at doing this now. This analysis and coming and asking us, okay, well, what about this? What about that? Who else do we know is developing, and what other options do we have? Some projects move ahead, and some of them they just have to keep deep breathing their pockets. Invite them, roll it, and pay for it upfront, and wait for people to pay them back later. So it's not so much a denial issue, because if you need the minimum standards. They're entitled to exercise their property, right?
Otherwise, we get sued and potentially lose.
And what we're dealing with on the Logan's.
Brandon?
Logan's Run site that was done on loop, we're ending the whole road stage. So we need to reevaluate what options we're on versus.
I feel like that's what it was at Belmont Loop as well. We weren't thrilled with it, but. We can see the writing on the wall.
Well, they met all of the requirements, didn't they? Yeah, it was in the code and everything, so. I was definitely not for it.
So is that it, Mister Doughter?
So it is, yeah, that's actually my workshop presentation, but. If anyone starts giving me advice or giving me anything, then we'll come back to it.
Well, I think I think we should do the abbreviated version and um. Try to get us down the road a few years before we have to have a consultant myself.
So if we do the abbreviated version, that puts us in line to work with the county on a bottoms master plan. And gives us a little more. Fight maybe per se, like. Hey, we have this, this, and this in line to show you why we think. We want this. With the abbreviated plan, correct?
Yeah.
Okay. And I and I think some of it, we've talked about in the last few meetings as well, is is looking up here at some of the things we're working on right now. You would be able to get some of these into that abbreviated plan without the state forcing us to put them in, and we. We essentially will say, this is what we want, not what you want. Okay.
I think probably the best gap of that is for the ci- for the citizens who are here during that climate um. Action and and climate resiliency discussion, and that is, there's a lot. In that discussion, and we can dive into those computer modelings, whether it's correct or not, or what you believe in and not. Whether it's whether it's for the culture for you or not. To me, that's not relevant. I would much rather. Volunteer the city for this pilot project so we can get this analysis done to bring and figure out. And how close are we to, you know, the finish line, and I wanna be the first person through the door. So that small communities have an example to follow. I do not wanna necessarily advise you to wait till twenty twenty six, twenty twenty seven, because by then. Clark County and their ten planners are going to set the bar awfully high. At which point we are going to be struggling to keep up with them, because. They've already crashed the wall and set the bar. I would rather be the first one through the door and establish. An example for other small jurisdictions to follow, rather than making us all take the same beating in Clark County. Seattle and King County, Lewis County, the jurisdictions that can afford. To do that and might have the political will to go beyond the end of the scale that you don't necessarily are hoping to. Follow, so it may not. Make sense for us to do anything but then kind of doing the briefing. And and now that I've kind of seen my presentation. The reason why I kind of laid it out like this is is my recommendation is that you kind of focus on the stuff on the right. And that's kind of the stuff that. As an abbreviated effort, I think we're gonna tackle that without getting into the big vision of conversation. And without getting into the main housing stuff, the economic development stuff. Lord knows that, you know, we've probably got a bunch of people in here to have conversations about economic development. But we have an economic development group. We have support, one of them is doing a bunch of that work. I'm not sure it makes sense for me to spend a lot of my time doing that. When we'd be better off just doing this quickly, very soon, to begin, through the door first and. And accomplish what we can and focus on. Continuing maneuver the county into a cooperative planning move, rather than waiting for them to decide what they wanna do to act. That's, to me, that's what we're waiting for them to do.
We're being proactive, right? Thoughts?
Yeah, I agree. I think that uh the sooner we. Get onto it, it's not only good to be first to the door, but I think it's a lot of money. What time?
Thoughts from this side of the table?
Uh but this is, so if you do the update and. You focus your attention on the other side, you said you could bang this out this year, right? By the end of this year.
I think we could do a large amount of this in a line of care and for that stuff. I I think what's gonna be hard for you is, uh as the elected official is. You're gonna have people in safe ways wanting to talk to you about stuff that is a lot bigger still. And as long as you understand why we're doing this, you should be able to answer those questions, be comfortable with your doing that back to the community. But at this point, I don't want to promise the clarity that we're gonna engage them. And then find out that people only wanna talk about economic development, because you're only gonna upset all of your constituents. By talking about anything but economic development to this other stuff on the floor.
Where does annexation? Fall into this?
Yeah, where's annexation fall?
So our existing permanent vote boundary um is establishing our comprehensive plan in twenty sixteen. The majority of that land is free to develop. And so it's unlikely that we would have any annexation for any new development. Um and so unless we have this new business group, if the property owners want to annex. It's unlikely we're gonna face annexation, except for the property by that little.
Mrs. Doughty, you had something?
So, okay, so, and I used to go slightly on the right, but the stuff in the blue, like the public involvement. Is that the list of sending out flyers and things like that?
That's the document that's kind of in there that the that basically says what we're going to do. The mailings, the open houses, the planning commission meetings, the the public outreach ever.
And then my next question is, like, the housing that we're having all this discussion on right now. And talking about doing plan and commission and all that, is that something that will fall into this plan as we're working through it right now? As well?
I think it's one of those things that we can add. I think it's all of those things that we can add, we can do there.
If we get to a point that we've come to some.
Yes.
Okay.
Cause we've done a lot of work on that, especially the planning commission. Um, I had a lot of discussions about that. The problem, of course, is there's a significant over on the council, weren't necessarily where. Once after next week, there will be four, we worked on the council at the time, it may have to die at. Wasn't there for that conversation? But we can, we can do that without having to reprove all of the analysis.
Well, I just say that, because if we're doing the public involvement, I think the housing issue is something that people have started coming forth. And asking, so it might be the Safeway conversations and the. Type of thing that, if that's something that will start being conversed on.
So this is just a workshop. One of the important questions for you is, what do you want me to do with the population calculation? Cause I could even bring those back to you in a month and say, okay. The number you asked me to look at, this is the implications of that, and you can do force correction. Before we can get to our first open house table. We'll give them the opportunity to see what I'm doing and some of that now, but. Before we can take it out to the public.
But historically, you already have your data. So it recommend, uh, the, your recommendation, it was a couple back. I didn't write it down, sorry. But whatever, but two points.
Oh, two point three, two point seven?
There. So historically, we were what, two point seven? That's the historical rate, but in actuality, it was what, two point three? Uh, or is that?
No, no, we wanted two point three. Reality was two point seven.
Oh, okay.
And in the next month, in the next five years, it's really gonna be more like two point three.
Gotcha.
So we're happy for that to go.
So keeping it the same would make sense.
And there's no real right or wrong number, because ultimately, what I'm going to do is. These calculations, the analysis, and what it's gonna show is we might have seven years worth of developable land. And then we're doing the family urban boundary, we don't need to do a lot more anything. A lot more projections for the next one year, because that land doesn't exist. It just means that we're gonna have the data that's gonna allow us to push back to the county and they're gonna say, yeah. We don't want to have this conversation and our answer is gonna be, no, we have to have this conversation. You can't say no this time like you did in twenty nineteen, because we have to prove that. The voting question is no longer by law.
That hasn't worked for anything all the way along. Ignoring it doesn't make it go.
Mr. Hall.
Um, I, I have another question on that population pool thing. Um, the numbers from the school history. So dramatic changes in demographics over the last few years, um, three, four, five years. So the historical demographic that we had was growing at a certain rate. But now all of a sudden, the demographic changes. How do we factor in those changes as they'll affect how many people are here?
That is a great question. Um, I think we're gonna have some fun conversations. You seem like you're the kind of policy won, but I'm gonna get along with it.
That was a compliment, Councilmember Hall.
I think there's part of the question, if you could go down that rabbit hole right now, you don't currently necessarily deal with that. My answer is gonna be, you just look at total population and how many thousand units. And whether that leads to a load, how much water, how much sewer in the menu. We could go down that rabbit hole, but that's why you have to have a consultant. With the expertise, somebody in his firm who can talk about equality, integrity and. Implications of affordability and stuff like that. That's a huge longer thing than, and the, the school that first. Has the advantage, is they have that data. But they also have the problem in that some of it's Clark County, some of it's Calis County, some of it's us. So they're dealing with, you know, impact and developments in two camps. In, in a county in the city, but not in, in, in Calis County, so they're wrestling with it. For a different reason, and yeah, we've been getting into that, but. I don't think it's one month instead of a, not a month, four months.
Mrs. Doughty.
Well, you asked a policy, a policy director on. You know, this, I think the two point seven, in my opinion, I think. Based on, you know, even us going up to Olympia and kind of listening to where the housing numbers are going to need to be. Across the nation, not just in Little Woodland or in Washington, but across the nation and. For future generations, for our. Water, sewage, utilities, for our schools, for everything. I don't think we can lower it to the two point three percent. And expect that to be. Realistic. I think we've got it, we've keep it at that two point seven percent. As we figure out numbers. Um, I don't know how everybody else feels, but I just don't think it's realistic to drop it below that.
I'm okay with having the two point seven.
I think, I think Mr. Goddard's looking for that, because if, if council were to come to you and say, you know what, I think that's great. I want to go to four and a half percent. Like, that would, that would require. Gobbling up a bunch of land and working with the county to figure out where we're gonna put all this housing that they. As we look to our neighbors to the south and what, what they've done to, in their community. I shouldn't say due to their community, what they've done with their community. Um. I don't know that, that a four point five percent would be supported by, uh, what we have right now, I think is. Manageable for, for our team and. Um, it's still gonna be hard to digest, the community will still have a hard time digesting um, that number. Um, or, or the, the amount of growth that is potentially on the horizon over the next few years, however. I don't know how, that you could stop it. And this is a very slow, uh, very slow growth rate. I do believe that. As hard, as hard as it is to digest a three apartment complex, is that a hundred and eighty units here and? Somebody wants to put in four hundred, and then all the single family residential houses that are already ready to go. Um. And that's a, that's a hard one.
But they have a scattered complexity of, you have a lot of significant factors that do not overlap. I mean, you have a county that has a different legal.
Yeah.
You have the school district that worried about placing schools in Yale. And, and recently, we've come to the table, which to me seems like a huge step forward. But there is just an, an added level of complexity that we have to deal with.
I think we also need to take into account the, the previous. And, and I've, my eyes have been open to this over the last few months as well, um, is. Our demographic that, that lives in town. We have a, a household median that's just under fifty thousand uh, dollars annually. Um, however, are, you just shared with me um, end of last week that the median house price in Woodland now is six hundred and twelve thousand dollars.
Yeah.
I mean, that's. Is, is, did I get that wrong? Or, or the average sale of a home is six twelve?
So the average.
Sorry, yes.
Yeah.
The median household. Is four hundred or five hundred and twenty one thousand.
Right.
So.
And you have a, a salary median of fifty thousand, just shy of fifty thousand dollars a year. So I think that when we look at these developers that are coming in, we need to make sure that they understand that, and this isn't. What we're seeing be, being built, nothing wrong with what's being built into our neighbors again to the south or, or out in the county. Um, but we, we have to take that into account too.
It's my girl who played volleyball and Ridgefield was very farmland. And, and now it's just the cover of a band.
Yeah.
And I mean, huge change coming in on what they're calling two ten, comes from twenty ten to twenty twenty. You know, um, Ridgefield grew by two hundred years.
Yeah. I don't know that that's what our, and I'm looking to. Mrs. Butler, because she's been here a long time and, and she's got her finger on the pulse, but I don't think that that's. The wooden way, and I don't think that's what Woodland wants. Yeah.
What one has the room for it?
And, and, and we don't have the room for it, unless we expand.
What Ridgefield took was all farmland, and that's why they don't have any of that. It's all housing. Are you gonna extend the meeting?
What, I mean, if we're, if you're still having a conversation, I'm gonna shut my mouth. Do, do we need to extend the meeting? Mr. Goddard, have you gotten your direction at this point?
Motion to end the meeting.
Wow, that was, that was great. Uh, motion by Councilmember Smith, seconded by uh, Mr. Burke. Uh, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Ten PM. Well done.
All right, four AM, I'm tired.
I was too, you should have called, you could have had coffee. I couldn't sleep last night.
I want to do a four AM, go have coffee with you.
Yes. I would want to have.